Being 5:32, I'll now call to order the regular meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA, this 20th day of October 2025, in the government center of the great town of Lake Placid. Kirk, would you please call the order? Call the roll.
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Councilmember Worley?
Here.
Councilmember Charles?
Here.
Councilmember Everhart?
Here.
Board member Hartzell?
Board member LeBlanc?
Here.
Okay. Now, this is a CRA meeting, so I would ask all comments that are going to be made be pertaining to the CRA at this time. We'll have the town council meeting following, but at this time we'll have public comment that's not on the agenda. Okay, saying none?
Doing prayer and pledge?
No, that'll be at the council meeting. All right, we'll go to number three, the consent agenda, A, approval of agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda in consent agenda number three.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second. Any further comments from the podium? Saying none, we'll take it to the audience. None there, go ahead and poll the council, please.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Board member LeBlanc?
Yes.
Let the record show that Mr. Frank Hartzell is present. Okay, under B, approval of the minutes, August 18th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August 18th, 2025, consent agenda number three, B.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. All right, saying none, we'll bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Board member LeBlanc?
Yes.
Number four, presentations?
I forgot Mr. Hartzell.
I was gonna say.
Mr. Hartzell? Sorry about that.
That should go along with the $50 fine for him being late. All right, nope, I don't see any presentations, so we'll move on to five, action agenda.
There's no action, nothing on the action?
Nothing on the action agenda, okay. Number six, we'll go to the CRA board members, and we'll let the town administrator talk first.
We wanted to provide some updates. Harry is not here, and I call him our CRA guru, but he's on vacation, taking a much-needed break. We did find out from Jennifer Cotto-Salsbury, Eva and I met with her, and we went over the CRA plan, and we discussed the downtown stormwater master plan and streetscaping plan, and she did confirm that we can put that into the CRA budget for us to be able to use. We would have to shift some of the projects, so we leave you with that information, so that before our next meeting, you can look at the projects that we currently have to see if this is an item that you would like to put over on the CRA budget. We also have update for 151 Dow Hall. On the screen up above, and I believe in front of you, Harry was able to get two quotes for the addition for Dow Hall. We have those included in here, he is still trying to get a third quote. These will, we will email these out to you, I do not believe, there's, these aren't in the packet, correct, Eva? No. So, we will email them out, and if anyone needs hard copies, we'll be happy to print those for you. We are trying to save a tree, so if we can send it to you for you to view that way, we would rather do it that way, because we are still waiting for one more quote. The interior rehab of the project is pretty much complete. The bathroom has already been completed, it's been done for quite some time now. The emergency exit lights are all in functioning order, and the fire extinguishers have been placed at the exit doors. The fire suppression system has finally been installed above the stove, so we're currently waiting for Summit to contact us to have the fire marshal come out to test the suppression system. At that time, we will be able to have him inspect all of the other items that are recommended for us to be able to open up the building to get it rentable for us to, hopefully, we're hoping to be able to have that done in November. We still have to install the address numbers on the front of the building, and install two small ramps to help with the wheelchairs entering the building. Harry is planning to give the inside a fresh coat of paint for the interior walls, and he put a note here that, in his opinion, after those few items have been completed, and the fire marshal is happy, he said he will be ready to rent it out. That was his note in his comments. The patio project for 151 Dow Hall, he obtained the estimates and drawings for the proposed covered patio, they are attached here. He's currently working on getting two other estimates from other contractors since the project will be over the $10,000 threshold. The planning on Interlake, all the planning projects have been completed, and they are thriving. And then the proposals.
Is he going out for bid, or he's just contacting people to get quotes?
He contacted people for quotes, however, we will go out to bid now because of the dollar amount that is, that we are seeing coming back on some of these. It's over the $10,000 threshold.
Right, so 25,000 is 150,000, I mean, we can open it up without a covered patio, right?
Yes, ma'am, we won't wait on that, Councilwoman Charles, I agree.
Can I ask you a quick question? GNN, it looked like there were two proposals, did they break scope into two different projects or something? And I'm not sure who the first person was either. Contractor?
Right there, stop at that, Eva, did you see the proposal total?
Oh, they're, these are all GNN, so they gave three different proposals for three different scopes of work?
We have two documents here, Mr. LeBlanc, so this is the first document, and I don't know, Eva, if you can look at this second one that Harry had.
This is all I got, there's three of them here. Did I not bring the other one in?
Right there.
This one, I've got a proposal too.
Okay, so the second one is installing hardy board siding on the entire building, which I really think is probably a good idea, because that building really doesn't look up to the standards, so I think what we want our historic downtown area to look like, because it's exposed block painted, so I think it is something that we ought to be considering to dress it up. Okay, so the third one is to sandblast and restucco the outside as smooth stucco, so that's the 17,000. I personally, I mean, we'll have to, you know, visit this whole thing, but I think we ought to consider not only building the back patio area, but I think we ought to consider doing siding on the building, just to, I mean, the building with its low slope roof and everything else, not much to look at, you know, but I think we can improve it, and I think, but once we get multiple bids and compare all the bids, I think is a good idea, and I think that should be compared also, because we already have one bid, so.
How much have we spent so far? We purchased it for 300,000, how much have we spent just to try to get it open?
That, I don't have that information in front of me to be able to answer that, and I don't know that anybody else would have that right now.
I think, is it? In my mind, oh, go ahead, do you have an answer to that?
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't that be in the spreadsheet we got for the CRA? If I pull that out?
But there's more things that have been going on since, that's fine, I mean, it just gets to be, at what point, how much are we going to invest in this building? And I don't know that we went originally, because there's things we want to do in the playground, we've talked about fencing, we've talked about things, so I think we really have to have an overall plan of what exactly do we want to do with this building, how much are going to be the estimated costs, and is that affordability, or is that priority one for the town? I mean, because we could soon, as we talked about the last meeting, get it open, utilize it, and, boy, if we're going to start doing some things on the outside, doing some things on the patio, doing some things here, this thing is just going to continue to get pretty pricey. And, and what's the return on it? And I get it, aesthetics is nice, but what's the return on it when there's a lot of other things in the town that we should be addressing?
I, I think they did interior work to bring in handicap accessibility, so to make a handicap accessible bathroom out of something that wasn't handicap accessible, and make the kitchen functional, and I think if, from what I remember, we're talking plus or minus 10 grand they've spent on the inside, and then I think, you know, we spend this money on the outside, and then the outside's done, and then the rest we have to do is to work on the park, for the most part, right? I, I don't think there's anything left to do unless you're gonna tear the building down and build a new building, which we're not, we're not doing, so I think if we're not doing, tearing it down and building a new building, which we're not, then we have to make that building, you know, nice enough, you know, to be a park in our historic downtown, right? And, and then we gotta move on to the park.
To Councilwoman Charles's point, though, we will need to be able to go back over the list and look at where we want to reallocate, because it will go over with the proposals for this project, it will go over the amount we were already needing to scale back, and so we'll need to look at that again.
Can we just move forward with the inside portion and wait on the exterior so that people could actually start using the building? Is that a possibility? So, we could go ahead and do that now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we just, do we have all the inspections for the interior?
We're waiting on that, we're currently waiting on that, from the fire marshal.
Okay, so we could go ahead and finish the interior, so it could be used, and then we can just work on the exterior to get something that's, I think we should wait until we get something that's, you know, what we should have, instead of something that is okay, just like Lake Placid does, we don't do okay, we do, we do really well, so I'm suggesting that we go ahead and move forward with the interior, and then go keep working on the exterior. Do we need to make a motion for that, or?
No, ma'am.
Okay. That would be my suggestion, let's keep working on the exterior and getting the funding, getting the prices, and then go ahead and start using that interior, so we can start serving the public with what we already own.
I support that.
I, I support that, too. It appears that we're waiting on the, the fire marshal inspection for the hood and everything else that they inspect on the inside of the building, then we put the numbers on the building and make the wheelchair ramps, and then we're ready to be able to open it, and I agree, I think we can open it the way it is, and yes, it would be nice to improve the outside and to put the patio, and we can use that, do that as upgrades later, but I think we've held this property long enough, we need to open it to the public if we can get these approvals.
And as soon as we are, we get that notice, we know when we can open it, we're going to work with the chamber so that we can have a ribbon cutting and do a ribbon cutting down there, and invite the public to be a part of that, so it'll be forthcoming, we have more information to come.
And I don't throw tomatoes, but we need to set a fee structure for the rental of the building, because I don't think it comes under anything that we have right now, as if anything did, but I think that's a kind of a bag of worms, but we can't, we can't rent it if we don't know what we're gonna rent it for, so. So, do we need a motion or anything, or are we just moving forward?
Just an update and conversation.
Okay.
Discussion, dialogue.
Can we back up to the feedback that Jennifer gave you on what we can use CRA money for? You had said the two studies, the storm, the stormwater?
Yes, ma'am, so Kim Lee Horn, we had, we entertained them to be able to get a stormwater master plan, so that we could address streetscaping and stormwater issues that we're having in the downtown area, and when we looked at the CRA map, I do not have that with me, it is in my office, but we looked at the CRA map, and the areas that we primarily have the issues are in the downtown historic CRA area, so it, it is covered in our CRA.
Remind me how much the, the master plan estimate was?
It was around 70,000.
70,000, so is that something we need to make a motion and discuss here? Is that a new item that you're recommending?
It's a new item, it's a new item we're bringing forward for you to be able to have time to divulge that a little bit, and be able to digress and see, because I know we took a lot of the projects, and we said we wanted to do this and that, and move, and we moved everything everywhere, it is up to date.
And also, your CRA budget had been set, in order to change that, you'll have to bring it back to the CRA board?
Right, okay.
To make that decision to move money out of the, change your line items for your projects.
What was the timing that they were gonna start on that master plan? Do you know, Charlotte, was that still just up in the air?
It's up in the air.
Because I, I just know with all of the, you know, every time we have a nice flood, right, in front of the Women's Club, in front of the historical museum there and other areas, it's just flooded.
There's quite a few that have been reported across town.
Yeah, still in front of Debra's office as well, I don't think, I don't think that pavement improvement did what we thought it was going to do, yeah.
I agree.
And when we're talking master plan, are we talking about South Florida Regional Planning Council doing a master plan for the historic downtown, or are we talking master planning drainage?
Okay, so that's a good question, Mr. LeBlanc, there's two separate things, so Jennifer Cotto-Salsbury and Central Florida Regional Planning are handling the downtown revitalization plan. We entertained Kim Lee Horn to find out about getting a downtown stormwater and streetscaping plan, so we are able to get that through Kim Lee Horn. They're, they're engineers that would be able to come and look at our downtown area, give us stormwater improvements, they would go and deep dive on even the parking. Now, through Jennifer Cotto-Salsbury's with the CFRPC, they do address street parking and things of that nature as well, so you'll see that component in both reports, but Kim Lee Horn's is going to focus more on the traffic and where the puddling is for the water and things of that nature.
When are we gonna see the master plan from South Florida Regional Planning Council? I know there's a meeting here in a week or two, is that going to give us, show us the plan they came up with, or they're not ready yet?
They're not ready yet, this is still part of that process, so they'll do the community workshop, they'll get additional feedback, and then from that, they'll start wrapping up.
I like the idea of hiring an engineer to do this analysis for drainage downtown is definitely needed, I would just want to make sure that we are looking at the master plan in the historic downtown she comes up with in regards to the drainage, because he might find some green space that he wants to put drainage in, and, but she wants to put parking in, thinks we should put parking, I think we need to, you know, really see hers, and he needs to keep hers into consideration if we like and want to adopt some of what she's coming up with, as he comes up with how he's gonna deal with drainage situation, so, but I do like the idea of hiring somebody, it's, it's definitely time, and I think we've got the funds that we can make that happen, yeah.
It's definitely overdue, and it'll help us to be able to address the, the issues that we have and start really correcting them.
In the August 28th meeting, there were some things we shuffled around on the plan, and I, unless I missed it, I haven't gotten the updated version.
So, you need an updated copy?
Yeah, then when we get an updated one, we can look at that and figure out where to move some money around.
Make some changes.
And then, Charlotte, is it one or two plans? So, it's a stormwater and streetscaping together? Is it two separate plans?
That will be together, that will be together, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that's the 70,000?
Yes, ma'am.
So, when's the next CRA meeting?
Good question, we need to know that from you all. We, we know that, we were looking at the schedule, we were looking at calendars, trying to check, because we're going to go into November and December, we don't know that you want to wait all the way until January, so if you don't, then we need to know, do you want it in November, do you want it in December?
I would like to keep moving, because, well, things are fresh.
Are you, if, once you have all the prices for the community building at the park, are you gonna need to bring it back to us to make a final okay on going forward with one of those?
We know that we're going, based off of these amounts, we'll have to go ahead and go out for, out for bid for that, so we'll prepare it and put it together. I don't know that we'll have any, we won't have a response by November, so maybe December, and then it's Christmas, so.
Yeah.
I think, though, that we would like to meet back here at the CRA with reference to the stormwater, streetscaping, and the master plan, as soon as those things may be ready, but there's no use to having a meeting if these reports aren't ready. I, I think that we can delay until probably January with reference to the bids, because by the time they go through the bidding process, it'll be that long before the bids, you know, the request for bids go out, and then the bids come back in, so maybe we kind of need to separate those two projects, or?
Do, do we have to tell you where to, where to move the money to pay the 70,000 before it goes ahead? Before we can do the studies?
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's why I was saying, you know, at least get the 70,000 reallocated from wherever, so they can go ahead with the studies.
Yeah, and how long is that project gonna take for that engineer to do his analysis and everything?
That I can't answer.
Oh, 'cause, I mean, on one hand, I want to see the master plan, you know, that we might adopt for historic downtown, as, as he's doing his engineering analysis, I want him to know what, what it is that we would like to see as a master plan for the downtown, but he's got so much work to do, and it's gonna take so much time, as long as he knows it's coming and knows that he's going to have to reference it in regards to the engineering study he's doing, I think we could hire him before we see that, and just make sure that there is some, you know, discussion once the master plan comes. And I think the master plan was supposed to be done by the end of the year, right? So, it's probably really close to being done, I'm thinking, am I right?
I think that's right, it's near the end here, but we still have, we still have at least one, and maybe two public forums to go through yet.
Correct.
For them, so they don't have, they don't have all their data yet, so. But, but these are two different items, one is the master plan, that we need a meeting as soon as possible, so we can authorize, you know, a budget transfer, the other is the bidding on Dow Hall, I mean, that'll just cycle in during whichever meeting, I mean, we've got
I agree with that.
Close to 638,000 in CRA money to spend, and over the last year, we've done the, the flowers and the beautification, and it seems like we've kind of hit, like, a slow spot, and maybe it's with, you know, getting project managers in place or what, but, you know, we've got a lot of money out there that we can do things for the whole CRA district. We originally went from quarterly meetings to monthly meetings, and that was the plan, let's do monthly meetings so we can work it along, we've added a second meeting of the month now to be the CRA and part of the council, so my interest is to, to get back, providing staff is able to do that, but to get back monthly and keep working through, helping you with what are the projects that we need to work on, I mean, we got a lot of money, but we might not have the staff and the people to work on, and each of these takes time, so.
Yeah, I agree, I think.
I think it should be monthly.
I, I agree, I think we should do monthly until we get these people hired and get them working on, on their engineering, I don't think there's a reason to wait, because we have funding, I mean, we have to allocate it, but we have funding, and that's such a problem that's so significant and been in this town for decades, you know, I, I don't, I don't really see a reason why, we, we ought to postpone it if we don't have to, I mean, I don't want to postpone it just because we want to meet every three months instead of every month, I think, you know, everybody's probably willing to meet, you know, next month to try and work through that process, right? So, I'm willing, you know, if you all are willing, let's move these things forward.
My, my only challenge is, does the staff have time to get the reports that we all ask for before we try to make a decision? Because making decisions is very difficult for all of us, and it seems that we need an act of God to try to find the historical data before we do any kind of decision on anything, whether it's the sun comes up in the east or whatever, so I think it's difficult for the staff when they're researching things from the beginning of time for town council, and then they're researching things from the beginning of time from, you know, the CRA, and then say, oh, by the way, let's meet every month, and so let's have two council meetings and a CRA meeting every month, and staff's going, are you kidding me? So, I think we have to take that into consideration.
So, do I hear a motion to move forward? I think we need to keep moving forward on these projects, and I'm going to go ahead and disclose that I am property manager of properties downtown that are having water issues. We have had water issues continually for the last 100 years, basically, since the buildings have been built, so I think we should keep moving forward, so whatever motion is suggested to move forward, I think we should move forward with whatever we need to, I mean, and I am disclosing that I do have an interest in property management downtown, but I see it firsthand, I walk those streets, there's buildings that are being flooded, and we need to figure it out, I don't think it's, it's not a hard nut to crack, it's just that, you know, we've done some small, some small renovations, like on Hibiscus in South Maine, where we just did some, you know, some low slope, we can still park on them, because of our soils, we can do that, but we do need the studies, so I think we should move forward with whatever studies we need to, just move forward and let's just get it done, I mean, these businesses are suffering, and while we're into, hopefully, you know, not the rainy season anymore, we're heading into the dry season, but while the dry season's here, and before we have more hurricanes, let's just solve the problem, it's just not a difficult, I don't think it's difficult.
To make a motion to make next month?
Okay.
Charlotte, don't we have, like, a couple hundred thousand of unallocated CRA funds? We, we came up with all the projects, but we have some unallocated amount?
We didn't, we actually went over, whenever, we actually were going to have to cut back on it, because we went over, so in November, we will come back with a, an updated budget, you'll receive that ahead of time, we'll go ahead and get that into your inbox, and if you need us to print a hard copy, we'll have that ready for you, and November, we'll be prepared to bring back the, the plan for the stormwater, so that you can make a vote at that time and determine where you would like to move the funds, and we'll move forward with that, and then if we have bids back by December, then we will have a December meeting, otherwise, as Councilwoman Hayes said, we could potentially do, then we would say, let's have that in January if we don't have them in December.
But I, I want to agree with, with Debra, with, we have to, the citizens have to come first, and the first thing is the stormwater, because we, and, and the streetscaping for the, for the people that live in the town, and because they're having flooding issues, so let's prioritize that as number one, and then the master plan is kind of this ongoing thing that's spinning and twirling, and we'll, we'll land at some point when all the public input things are, are completed, and then the Dow Hall building can be done in January. Sound like a plan?
Cool.
And didn't we, in the regular budget, allocate this master plan for the storm drain?
We did.
We talked about it.
We did talk about it during the budget workshops, but this was one we didn't bring forward. Yes, ma'am. But we did talk about it at Great Lake.
Businesses are flooding downs, down in, in town, they're flooding, so if we even started today, by next, you know, spring, when the waters come, hopefully, we would have it done, so I just think we need to move forward.
So, I'll make a motion, that we have a meeting next month, to adjust the budget to account for the stormwater study, with future meeting dates to be determined.
Do, do we have to wait till next month to approve the funding for the study? Can't we approve the funding for the study tonight?
No. We don't know where, what line item is coming from, unless you want to do it.
Okay, because of the project, we have to put it on the project list, so we'll have to adjust some of the projects that we've already allocated, and, and place dollar amounts there.
No, I thought, that Mr. Hartzell said that we had $600,000 somewhere, so. We do, in CRA. Right, isn't this a CRA stormwater project?
It is, but we went through the project list, and when we went through that project list, we allocated all of the money, and so.
All the 600,000?
Yes, ma'am, so we'll, we'll move it now.
Okay.
Where is the proposal from these guys? I haven't seen it, is it in the agenda package somewhere, or you haven't shown it to us yet?
For what, the stormwater?
No, Kim Lee Horn?
That's the, it's, that's the stormwater through Kim Lee Horn, and it went through the budget process, you're correct, Mr. LeBlanc, I'll send that out to you, you weren't, you were not part of that.
Right, I'd like to see that, yeah.
We'll send that out.
So, so we have a motion?
You have a motion, I'll second the motion.
And while I de-represent at least one building... And while I do represent at least one building that's being flooded, I don't think if Bert Harris was here, he would say for the whole town, I cannot vote on this issue. So I'm going to go ahead and vote yes.
Does this delay you a month of getting started? I mean, it, it's unfortunate that we don't have the CRA budget in front of us to say, okay, let's put this one and take these two off, and then you can get going versus wait a month to come back with what items are going to be put to the next year. That, I, I mean, I support what we're saying, but I'd like to kind of get, get you going on that versus wait a month so that we can just make a budget item transfer.
And I did not mean to skip over the discussion and the public comment. I just wanted everybody to understand where I stood on this issue.
Councilwoman Charles, we will have to go through that. It took us, I want to say, almost two hours when we went through that. Don't hold me to it. But we will have to look at that probably more in length. And then you'll have to decide if you want to do that in this setting or if you want to have a separate meeting. To just keep in mind that the CRA meetings are scheduled at the same time as the town council meeting, so this meeting will happen before your town council meeting, and so this meeting can run kind of long. Just something to keep in mind.
And so maybe just future pa, future packets as we'll include the list of items that we've approved, so we can always have it right in front of us.
We can have that, absolutely.
Any other comments from the board? No? Nothing down here? Well, if there's nothing else become for the-
We have a motion in a second.
Oh, we did?
We do have a motion in a second.
Okay. All right, and the other comments on the motion from the podium? Take it to the audience? All right, sing, now bring her back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Harts, I mean, Board Member Hartzell?
Yes.
Board Member LeBlanc?
Yes.
Okay.
We are going to get a chance to, we're going to get a chance to talk.
That's what I asked, nobody said anything.
Well, because we were in the middle of that.
Yeah, I didn't know that. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. All right, where are we at with doing the flower pots on Inner Lake? We walked Inner Lake, a few of us, we talked about where we would put them. I mean, is that in the process of being quoted and being processed?
You're talking about the new ones, the new pots.
Yeah.
Harry's, he's, he's in the process right now of training a new staff member, and then they will start working on that.
Okay. All right. And then, before I can say anything else, because you leave the meeting, I just want to go over a few things. So I went to the Community Redevelopment Association Conference last week, where I took a CRA class and met a lot of people, went to a lot of classes, saw a lot of things. I mean, a lot of these CRAs are doing amazing things in the state of Florida, you know, way, way more significantly than what we're doing, way bigger than what we are. But one thing that I noticed as they were talking and as I was meeting and talking to people, a lot of CRAs are using consultants to get things accomplished, because I think one of our big problems is our staff, your staff, doesn't have enough time to process, you know, the $600,000 worth of ideas and funding that we have to do in a very timely fashion, because you just don't have the staff, right? So they seem to be hiring consultants in many cases. Of course, we're waiting now for the master plan to make decisions on exactly what we do going forward. And I just want to throw out there, and I've got business cards from various consultants for various things, and I'd like to give that to you, you know, as some reference material in case we want to look at that. And there's also, like, we talk about wanting to do lights downtown that are downlights, not uplights. You know, I met lighting companies there that will come to us, meet us, walk the downtown with us, give us their recommendations, do lighting determinations and analysis of what type lights we need in order to get, you know, a certain amount of lighting on the ground between poles and so on. They can even bring sample lights to us and stuff. So there's a lot of, I think, you know, people and companies that can work with us and help make your life easy and us get things accomplished in a more timely manner than what staff seems to have. And of course, you know, a lot of these CRAs, they have, they actually have CRA staff. We have no CRA staff. Right now, the town is our CRA staff, but they already had a job before we started the CRA, and they're understaffed, even their job, it seems like. So I think as a CRA board, we should be aware, in fact, pass this down, and you guys could take a look at this. Pass that down. And then I've got this for you that I'd like to give you. And so I think we should, you know, consider hiring consultants when we need things done. I'll give you an example, wayfinding signage. We could hire a consultant that will design the wayfinding signage, which is maybe the result, a result of the master plan. But we could hire a company that will design the wayfinding signage, go over it with us, show us what they have in mind. We like it. Then they'll put it out to bid. They'll get multiple quotes, and then they'll come to us to make this decision. Once we make a decision, they'll, you know, deal with implementation, review, make sure they put it all in the right place and the right way and so on. And so we could get things accomplished by hiring a consultant that takes it from one end to the other, and, and it doesn't get on the back of town staff that's already understaffed. So I think there's things like that that we ought to consider, you know, doing and utilizing to help us get our stuff accomplished, you know, in a timely fashion, because, you know, we went from a hundred and something thousand dollars to having, you know, over 300,000. Now we're going to have 600,000. So we have money piling up in the bank, and, and the reality is, we have ideas of what we want to do with it, we just can't spend it as fast as it's coming in, and it's really not coming in that fast because it's really not that much money. But, you know, and we have projects that we can do with. That's my thoughts, so.
I think we found a lot of the same, not necessarily the same companies, but the same concept when we went to the League of Cities. And there are a number of electrical companies that are much closer than some of those that are on there. I mean, those are some California companies and Texas and things like that. These are local companies and, like Duke, for instance, that were happy to come and do, do estimates for us. I think the whole, the whole thing, it, it's not a holdup, but I think we have to be careful that we take one step at a time and the correct steps in order, because otherwise, we're going to end up going back and messing up. But I think the most important thing is we need the Center of Florida Planning Master Plan first, and then we can prioritize where we want to go. And, and I know that we do have this money piling up, and yes, we need to spend it. You like to spend the money. I do too. But we have to spend it appropriately, and I think in the proper order for the proper things, because otherwise, we are not making our responsibility to the taxpayer.
I agree completely.
And I think the public needs to understand, CRAs are structured. So like Sebring has a full-time person that just works on the CRA. Our CRA falls on the heads of all our staff here. And what's really wonderful, when I started looking at the CRAs, is that they have their own granting ability if we have staff to pursue that. Well, we don't because we don't have a designated staff to do that. So if you look at, you hear that in the newspapers, CRA and Sebring, and they get probably 500 to 700,000 a year because they established earlier than us, and they have enough money to have staff. But there is granting abilities just through our CRA, but we don't have staff to do that. So, I mean, we're just a growing group, okay? We're trying to do the best we can with what we have, and so everybody needs to understand that, because I know there's a lot of like, well, Sebring's doing this. Like, well, they have a ton of money. And the way the CRA works, if you don't use the money, you lose it. So they are doing a lot of things to use that money so they don't have to give it back to the county. We actually get county money to do these projects. But there is granting ability if we had staff to do it, and that's something else we can look at in the future. So we're just a growing CRA, and we're doing the best we can. So I just wanted the public to know that, that our staff is burdened with another task to the CRA. So every time we ask them to do something, it's one more thing.
But it could be charged to CRA, right? Couldn't a project manager specifically for CRA, isn't that what they do up in Sebring?
They're, they do that in Sebring, but their plan allows for it, so every CRA plan is written differently, and our plan didn't write for us to have that in there. However, we can apply for Florida Commerce Grant to help us once we have our master plan for the downtown area. We could apply for that grant, and they will come in and help us to execute rolling out the plan.
If they'll become the consultants, if, once we get the master plan, we can-
Apply for it through the Florida Commerce-
We can apply for that, and they could be the, they would be the consultants.
Yes, ma'am.
I think after we see our master plan, we might want to consider revisiting the, the CRA plan and maybe change this CRA plan to match what we all would like to see our CRA being capable of doing. Yeah, and I'd say one more thing, one of the things that they were talking about, which I found very interesting, and they said, you know, the CRA district is, is created because of slum and blight, and the intent is to improve the CRA district. And a lot of these places are doing big things to do that. One of the things somebody said, and it really stuck with me, he says, if you're going to do a park in a CRA district, he said, don't do it to match the quality of some other, you know, common park that you have. He said, you should be doing it at a higher level. He said, you should be trying to bring up the CRA district in quality and, and trying to improve the entire CRA district wherever and however you can to improve the property values in the district. And he's, and, and they're big on improving the value of the property in the CRA district because it improves the taxable value, which improves the tax income, which is a self-fulfilling thing. But they said, don't do it at just some simple standard level when you're going to do something. Do it at a higher level so you're bringing the value of everything up as a result.
I think we need to understand the process it would take to change the CRA plan as well. Deborah, weren't you involved when we first developed the CRA plan for Lake Placid? Do you, are you familiar with what we would have to do to change that plan?
It's, it's a lot. And right now, we have a lot on our plate. I would say let's look at that next year. But I think that we, as a CRA board, have made incredible strides.
Right.
Incredible strides for our new CRA, which we are just starting CRA. So I think you all should give a pat on the back. But next year, after we get through the grant processes we're going through, yes, let's look at that. Because you can change it, and you, but it's, it is a process, and I think we have enough on our plate at this moment-
Right.
-just trying to get through this part of it. But you are absolutely right. We can change it, and we can add a staff. I mean, we're still growing. I don't know if we have enough money for that, or maybe we do, but let's look at that next year.
The first thing-
I think that's a great idea, but you all need to, you are like pioneers in CRA.
Yeah, and they talked about that.
Very happy with yourselves.
It's very normal to change the plan for the CRA, you know, as they were saying, they, people change them all, CRAs change their plan all the time. They even have consultants to help accomplish those goals, right?
Absolutely, you can do that. But I think as a town right now, we have enough on our plate to get through right now. But yes, and you can change the dynamics of it, you can change anything you want to in it. You just have to line it out, agree on it, and then just ask, what do you, what is your money to be spent for? That's one of the main things we have right now. Are we going to spend it on this or that? And then how's it structured? Do we have money in there to have somebody administer it instead of just town staff? We actually have a consultant or someone to manage it to give us guidance and maybe do some of those granting abilities that the CRA could be doing? I saw a beautiful park up in Sebring that the CRA grant did. It wasn't the city, it was the CRA did the granting ability. But we're, I just, I feel we're not there yet because we're just getting started, and we have enough right now as a town on our plate. But next year, I would definitely say, yeah, let's look at it.
We need the master plan first and then-
Yes.
-and then move forward. But we, we just can't go forward without the master plan.
Absolutely. But you guys, you're doing a great job.
Any other comments? All right, there's no other business to come before the CRA board? Meeting adjourned.
We didn't get to keep any of that. I didn't get to keep it. She didn't get to keep it. I want one too. Yeah, that's what I was asking. You tell him I said it's because he sticks it out too much.
Being 6:19, I'll now call to order the regular meeting of the Lake Placid Town Council this Monday, October 20th, 2025, in the government center of the great town of Lake Placid. We were not able to acquire a clergyman tonight, but we are honored to have with us a man of many hats. One, a concerned citizen. Number two, the chairman of our LPA. And number three, the pastor of Grace Bible Fellowship. And Dustin, we'd be proud if you would lead us in the invocation and pledge. If everybody would please rise.
Lord, we come to you with just extraordinary gratitude that you have assigned us to live in a place like this, and we want to steward it well, and we know that we need your wisdom to do that, so lead us as we govern this community in a way that honors you and serves its citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dustin. Okay, we'll go to number two, public comments. Remember, try to limit it to three minutes.
Mayor?
Oh, I got to call the roll first, yes. Thank you. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I will. Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Councilmember Worley?
Here.
Councilmember Charles?
Here.
Councilmember Everhart?
Here.
Okay. All right, number two, make sure your phones are either off or on vibrate before we get started. We'd appreciate that. And when I'll go to public comments, remember to limit three minutes or less. I have a couple here. Number one's Ray Royce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Ray Royce, 113 Waters Edge Lane here in the town of Lake Placid. My main purpose to come tonight is to say a thank you to town staff. I'm going to do a couple of things before that very quickly. I turned into your meeting for the last hour or so last week, I guess it was last week. I appreciate you all appointing Charlotte to the EDC board, and I wanted to share that the reason why we had asked, and staff there had asked Charlotte to do it, is because while the EDC board, the Commons County EDC board, is no longer a sunshine committee, if y'all had appointed a council member or the mayor to do it, then they would have been precluded from coming back on things that may come before you all in talking to their fellow council members about it. So it's advantageous that it's Charlotte, because if there are things, projects, perhaps in the future, she can now come back and talk to all of you all about it. So we're looking forward to her being a part of that. So we're looking forward to her being a part of that. You also talked a little bit about the firehouse. Seemed to be some question whether it was going to happen. I've worried about this for years and years. I do believe it's going to happen. The county does have some title or survey issues they are going to clear up. There is approximately $4 million that is set aside for that project. They are obviously making a legislative request for, for other funds. But I do believe that even with the money they've set aside, they may not be able to do the whole project, the training component of it, but they will be able to get started on, on putting it on that property. I think that's important to all of us as residents, Lake Placid, that we want to have a proper structure with properly staff because there is only generally one paid firefighter that sits north of, south of 98 and 66. So I think it's good that we get the southern half of the county or southern two-thirds of the county gets a good representation. I will also say that I would encourage you all, I know Collins County is working on it with FDOT District One. I hope you all continue to put some pressure on the district and talk with the county about the intersection in regards to the new Amazon intersection. I know some of you all met there, but FDOT, I mean, the reason they didn't allow that to move forward now is because they have another project going on there. We all know that not a damn thing has happened there for months and months and months. And so it, it is asinine that we can't move forward with a project that a private entity can pay. Not only would it benefit that project, but it is the key to some other economic development projects that hopefully you all will continue to work on. Now to the thank yous. Coming up the road the other day, I noticed, I believe, one of your town staff cleaning up the bushes in the middle of the meeting in 27, they looked very sharp. And you all are very fortunate, not only, I had no idea who the young man is, just wanted to say thank you to him. You all are very fortunate that you have the Charlottes and the Rachels and the Eva's and the others of the world. You have a very good staff. It dismayed, dismayed me at times that I see people in the public provide disinformation and kind of say, hey, let's burn this thing down in essence. I hope you all appreciate the staff you have and go forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Royce, thank you for the comments. I was the one on the economic development that said, should it be the town administrator or the mayor? Because Sebring has their mayor and Avon Park has their mayor. So are those two cities in sunshine law risk?
Well, they are only, you're, you're correct. And they are only, there's only a sunshine risk if they go back and talk to their fellow elected officials on projects that may come before them.
Outside of a meeting, right?
Outside of, outside of the public meeting. I guess, I was just trying to explain, I think the good thing, if I may take another 30 seconds, the good thing is with Charlotte, ultimately, staff is going to work on these projects that are going to come to this area. And so I just think it's a good idea. I don't know whether or not long Mr. Swain may know. You know, maybe Sebring will do something differently in the future. Who knows what's going to happen in Avon Park? But I just wanted to say, we appreciate your willingness to have Charlotte. We meet quarterly at 7:30 in the morning. Those meetings generally take about an hour, hour and a half. So it's not a huge imposition of time on her part. But thank you very much.
Yeah, and I also have said as vice mayor, I'd be happy to attend to further represent the town. I actually love going to the EDC meetings, but I do agree with Charlotte being our liaison, she can talk to each of us about it. I can't, I can't tell you what's going on because I'm not allowed to talk to you, unfortunately. Good old sunshine law. But Charlotte can, and I'm going to be there as well to represent the town. I said I'd do that and I will, and I actually enjoy it, so thank you.
Okay. Beth Dagren? Yeah.
Beth Dagren for the record, nine-year Lake Placid resident. Thank you. One question I had Mr. Royce brought up was the intersection at the Amazon place. So I heard part of the answers to that. I just want to clarify, they're trying to get a traffic light there, right? Because I go through there twice a day to go to Avon Park to work. And also Lake Francis, they put those sticks out. I have gotten pictures and sent to the county and I sent to DOT. There's cars going through those sticks at Lake Francis. I'm coming back today to come down for this meeting, I had to go a side street behind Lowe's and there's some white stakes that are more of a concrete base. Y'all put those posts up so people don't crash and people are driving through those two intersections. Twitty Road also. Now Twitty, I'm not sure if that's your jurisdiction, but I know Lake Francis Drive is, isn't it? Or is that, is that Highlands? It is county, but either way, we just, I, the safety of our residents and Amazon is your, your focus. And I'm going to continue working on FDOT in Highlands County to get the other two intersections properly blocked so people can't drive through them. It's dangerous.
I was going to say, if your contact, mayor, is her contact information on there? Her phone number? I was going to say that I'll follow up with you after so that I can get some of those concerns and I have contact information I'll share with you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just, should, should we, as a town, send a letter to DOT?
We did.
You, oh, okay. You did?
Yes.
Can we get a copy of it?
We're, we're also on a call every week. Burt Warner sits on a call every Tuesday with DOT.
We did a resolution, didn't we?
We didn't, we didn't. We, we were going to present one, we have not presented one.
Oh, I thought we did.
No, I don't recall a resolution on that.
We did not do a resolution on that.
Okay, yeah, I asked that question before and I was told that we had, we had done one in the past.
Yeah.
Not for that light, not for that light.
Okay, yes. Yeah, then, yes, then it will be done.
Yeah. It's important.
Okay. I will now go to presentations.
Approval of agenda, mayor? And then I think Charlotte's got something to say about-
Oh, I'm sorry. Number three, we don't have minutes, but we do have approval of agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We need to take one item off of this agenda.
The last one. I got it, right there.
6B. 6B, Lake Placid Camp and Conference Center needs to be taken off of the agenda. It will not be heard tonight.
I'll revise that motion to make a motion to accept the agenda with eliminating 6B.
Second.
All right, now we'll go to number four, A. Town of Lake Placid celebrating Florida League of Cities-
Mayor.
Oh, we got a vote on it. I'm trying to get ahead of myself, sorry. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments from the podium? Any from the audience? All right, bring it back, pull the council.
Councilmember Charles.
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart.
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Councilmember Worley.
Yes.
And I apologize, but we got a couple of people that, one's leaving on vacation soon, some meeting's over, and I think now you have to be away.
I'm, I'm leaving in the morning, I'm okay.
Oh, you're leaving in the morning? Okay.
I've already, I've already been and returned and going back.
Okay, all right. So now we'll go to, we're done with three?
Yes, you're at-
All right, so now we'll go to presentations. Town of Lake Placid celebrating Florida League of Cities Government Week. This is Resolution 2025-21, a resolution of Town of Lake Placid recognizing Florida City Week, October 20th through the 26th, 2025, and encouraging all citizens to support the celebrating, celebration and corresponding activities. Do I need to read the whole thing? Oh, you're gonna, you're gonna go down, okay.
Funny story, we received a notice that our internet and our attachments have not been working. And it's funny, but it's not, but it says Amazon on it from us, but it's really S-O-V-R-A, S-O-V-R-A. So just so everyone's aware, that's the problem, is we're having issues with the internet.
Yeah.
So why Charlotte's going down there? It's a big thing for us as a town, as a city in the, in Florida, to participate in the Florida League of Cities. They're always campaigning for us, they're always watching our back as a city, as a town. So it's important for us to celebrate this week.
A resolution of the Town of Lake Placid recognizing Florida City Week, October 20th through 26th, and encouraging all citizens to support the celebration and corresponding activities. Whereas city government is the government closest to the most citizens and the one, the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home. And whereas the city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Florida City Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city staff to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence this branch of government. And whereas the Florida League of Cities and its members, and its member cities have joined together to teach citizens about municipal government through a variety of activities. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town of Lake Placid as follows. Section one, that the Town of Lake Placid encourages all citizens, city government officials and employees to participate in events that recognize and celebrate Florida City Week. The Town of Lake Placid encourages educational partnerships between the city government and schools as well as civic groups and other organizations. That the Town of Lake Placid supports and encourages all Florida city governments to actively promote and sponsor Florida City Week, passed and adopted by the Town of Lake Placid dated this 20th day of October, 2025. And this evening, we are very proud to celebrate Florida City Government Week, which is a statewide initiative recognized across Florida by the Florida League of Cities, as Councilwoman Worley stated. It's to promote civic education, community engagement, and appreciation for local government. This marks the first year that the Town of Lake Placid has participated, and we are very proud to join cities and towns across the state in highlighting the vital role of municipal government and the importance of involving future generations in public service. Tonight, we are very honored to recognize three exceptional students who embody the spirit of this week through their creativity, their leadership, and their community pride. We have a essay contest winner that we would like to recognize. I'll read and then we'll, we'll call her up. And I would really like for council, we could go ahead and say that council could stand along the front here to make easy for pictures. And then to also recognize Councilwoman Charles because this is part of something that was birthed out of her wanting to get the youth involved. And then this was initiative that our clerk had been working on and had wanted to see come forward for many years. So it's, it's a, it's a true thing to be able to finally see us having this recognition for the, the staff and also for the students that are being recognized. So our first recognition this evening goes to Genesis Jackson, a student at Lake Placid Middle School who was selected as the winner of the 2025 Florida City Government Week Essay Contest. In her essay, If I Served on Town Council, Genesis shared several thoughtful and inspiring ideas about how she would make a difference in her community. She spoke about improving public safety through the use of high-quality cameras in public spaces, and she showed deep compassion by suggesting ways to help people who are homeless find stability and hope. She also recommended improving communication between residents in the town by making it easier to report damaged road signs or malfunctioning traffic lights, reflecting a true understanding of how local government works. Genesis also looked to the future, suggesting that high schools teach life skills such as budgeting, credit, and investing to help prepare students for adulthood and learning more about government activities. She even envisioned a youth job readiness camp to teach responsibility and work ethic and a thoughtful idea for schools to provide umbrellas to kids who walk or ride the bus on rainy days. Genesis' essay reflects compassion, creativity, and civic awareness, all qualities that embody what City Government Week represents. So Genesis, if you're in the building, would you please stand up for us? On behalf of the mayor, the town council, and staff, we congratulate Genesis on her outstanding achievement, and we proudly present her with a certificate and also a $100 cash award for her accomplishment. So please come on up. We also have an intern recognition. Our next recognition goes to Ms. Cordelia Bemis. Come on up, Cordelia. She is a junior at Lake Placid High School and a proud resident of Lake Placid. Cordelia is a creative and enthusiastic student involved in several school activities, including chorus and art club. Outside of school, she enjoys playing video games, Dungeon and Dragons, whittling and creative writing, all of which showcase her imagination and her artistic spirit. Cordelia serves as an intern with the Town of Lake Placid where she applies her Microsoft Office certification and skills to assist both utilities department and my office. She works on mailers, reports, and special projects that require precision, creativity, and reliability, helping to enhance the town's communication and administrative efforts. Cordelia's professionalism, creativity, and commitment have made her a valuable part of our team. On behalf of the mayor, the town council, and staff, we extend our sincere appreciation for your service, Cordelia, and we are pleased to present you with this award in recognition for your contributions. Yeah, everybody, yeah, there we go. We do. We have another intern that we would like to recognize, Ms. Sanai Deveraux. She is our final recognition this evening. She is our final recognition this evening. Come on up, ma'am. She is a senior at Lake Placid High School and a proud resident of our community. Sanai has served as an intern in the town clerk's office, where she's been instrumental in assisting with our record digitization project. She's been scanning and cataloging historical town hall records for electronic conversion, and she's improved public access. Her work has required precision, organization, and dedication, all of which she has demonstrated with excellence. Sanai is a dedicated honor student, and in her spare time, she gives back to the community by volunteering with the Star After School Program in Highway Park. Her commitment to both education and community service truly reflect the values that we celebrate during City Government Week. We are also proud to share that Sanai will be recognized at Lake Placid's High School Homecoming Game and Court this week, where she placed three in the top five for the Homecoming Court, which I think is a big reflection of her character, her leadership, and community pride. So on behalf of the mayor, who's standing right next to you, and the council and the staff, we congratulate you, Sanai, on your professionalism, your compassion. These three women, Genesis, Cordelia, and Sanai, all represent the best of Lake Placid's youth and the bright future that our community has. So as we celebrate our first year participating in Florida City Government Week, we are reminded that programs like this inspire young people to engage, to lead, and to see local government as a place where they can make a real difference. So we thank you.
Next, we'll go to B, Tower Property Code Enforcement Update.
Thank you, Mayor. Afternoon, councilmembers. I was asked... I was asked to come today to give an update on the Tower Plaza. At approximately 9:50 hours on 10/14/2025, I went to inspect the property. I found 29 violations under minimum maintenance standards. Under minimum maintenance standards, no person shall maintain, occupy, or rent to another any buildings, dwelling, structure, accessory structure, or property which does not comply with the requirements herein after set forth, nor shall any vacant dwelling, building, or structure be permitted to exist which does not comply with the following provisions. 4743 Minimum Maintenance Standards. Exterior walls, every exterior wall shall be free of holes, breaks, loose, or rotting boards, timbers, masonry, or any other conditions which might admit rodents, insects, rain, or cause dampness in the walls or interior portion of the building. I'm not going to go over every single violation, but you can see on your monitor what violations I've found. If you have any questions, you can ask.
I guess that I could ask, what, so what you're going to do next? So what's the procedure so that we understand what's going to happen?
Of course. Last Friday, I met with Mr. Chuck Sverk, gave him a 90-day courtesy to be able to bring his property into compliance. If after 90 days he does not come into compliance, he'll be given a notice of violation, he'll be given 30 days. After 30 days, if that notice of violation does not come into compliance, it'll be sent to the special magistrate. I can keep going through this, but the 29 violations are on your PowerPoint. I can go through each one if you would like. If not, that's fine as well.
We don't have a copy of this PowerPoint though, do we?
You should, ma'am.
Okay. We can get a copy. I'm curious if the 29 violations are all, are they all brand-new? Or are these violations that have been reported in the past that have never been fixed or just became violations again?
Some of them are violations that are new, that have not been reported because they're new damages. Some of them have never been reported before, no, ma'am.
But were some of them reported before and he just did not resolve them?
Not that I'm aware of, no, ma'am.
So they're all new?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What was his reaction to the report?
He said he'll work on it. Would y'all like me to go through the entire PowerPoint presentation? Are y'all good with the 29 violations and the notice of violation?
How many more pages are there?
About 19. It would take about five or 10 more minutes. If y'all would like to, y'all can go through it. It's up to y'all. I know that y'all are time constrained.
No, I don't think so. He's on the clock, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions as a code enforcement officer? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll now go to public hearings. Due to, I think, a previous meeting that they need to get to, I've been asked to move B up. So we'll go to the second reading of 2025-06.
Kimberly Sap, on behalf, excuse me, on behalf of Donald Tina Clark and Clark Rental Properties. This is the second reading of an ordinance to vacate the alleyways.
Hold on just a minute. Yeah, I can't bring that up. Yeah. Bring it back down so I can read it, please.
I'm trying. My bookmarks are not working, so which one are we on?
B.
On the vacation.
5A.
5B.
5A.
5B.
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 Yeah, my bookmarks are not working. They were working.
There it is. No.
Can I make a public service announcement real quick? When I said that it was Amazon, it's Amazon Web Services is currently affecting access to, it says some of their applications, but it looks like it's a lot of their applications. So it's affecting our ability to do work. I just wanted to say that that's what it was called.
I think it's like page 22 or 23.
I have it up and I can read the title if you all would like. The ordinance is number 2025-06. It's entitled "An Ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid, Florida, Vacating an Unnamed Rightofway Adjacent to Donald and Tina Clark and Others, Prohibiting Separability and Providing for an Effective Date."
Thank you. Okay.
I believe, I don't think there's any issues with the proposed ordinance, at least from the petitioner, and I think staff is good. So unless the council had any particular questions.
Nothing's changed from the first reading, is it?
There's no drainage.
Right. That was something I think that Bert needed to work with you on that.
Right. Yeah, we had to get with staff.
Everything's the same, right?
Correct.
I'll go ahead and make, I'll make the, oh.
There is a change from first reading to second reading. And just for clarification, Dana Radel, Town Planner for the Record. In the first ordinance, the town attorney was requesting to reserve a drainage easement, which is what you were saying, it needed to be addressed. After further coordination with staff and the town attorney, it was determined that a seven-foot-wide reservation for drainage easement would not be useful to the town. So there is no longer a request or requirement. There's no language in the ordinance to reserve any drainage easements to the town.
Yeah, I think he was talking about swapping land or something like that. Okay, so, so the ordinance is the same as the first reading, but he had brought in those concerns, but has this ordinance actually changed from the first reading?
Correct, because the first ordinance had language in there reserving, and so that, that language has been deleted from, from this second reading. So it's, that just, that part of it was deleted. There's two paragraphs, I think, that he had in there.
Got it.
I'll move to approve ordinance 2025-06, hearing number LPV, it's a victory dot 25 dot 001, on second reading for discussion.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other comments from the podium? Seeing none, take it the audience. Hearing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Clarification, who did the second?
I think we were simultaneous.
Okay, so who did the first?
I'll, I'll take the second.
Go ahead and poll the council.
Thank you, Dana.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
All right, we'll now go to 5A, second reading, ordinance 2025-16, Budget Correction. Is that? Yeah, I've got it right here too. Okay. An ordinance of the... I think it should say Town of Lake Placid. It's just got an ordinance of Lake Placid. Anyway, Florida Town Council, okay, repealing. Town Budget Ordinance Number 2025-11, and adopting the final town budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, attached as Exhibit A, and provided for an effective date.
This is simply a correction to an inadvertent error, so I don't believe there should be, needs to be any discussion. I'll make a motion to approve and adopt ordinance 2025-16 on second reading for the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 budget, correcting the inadvertent error in the budget attachment to ordinance 2025-11.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the podium?
I do. For the record, I'll make the same comments I did during the budget workshop and also on the first reading is, and I appreciate coming forward to rescind and to correct an error, but regarding, I was opposed and continue to be opposed to an 18% ad valorem increase for the Lake Placid residents, which ends up being almost 46% of the rollback rate, recognizing that that ad valorem brings 1,276 of town taxes. And I know there's also a lot of comments that, oh, Avon Parks is this much and that, and they have different services and a different level of people. But the other thing that I don't think a lot of the people in the county realize is Lake Placid also has a 10% utility tax and also communication service taxes. That brings an additional 923,000 of revenue, and that's, that's 2.2 million just on the Lake Placid residents. The reason that I was opposed of the increase of that much is because more revenue has been coming in. In fact, Highlands County has recently adopted their budget, and it's on their website, the complete budget, and it says, "Overall taxable value of property taxes in Highlands County has increased for the 12th consecutive year. The combined increase in property value for the 25, 26 year is 8.46%." So not just are we going to get more revenue in the town from our property values increasing, but then we put another 18% on the town residents. And as far as the utility taxes that people don't realize, that's a Duke Energy, that's your propane, that's a franchise. Somebody called me to tell me they have property in the town and outside of the town, and the difference is a $50 increase in their town Duke Energy bill because of the franchise and the utility taxes. So just information on taxes coming in, but this council has already approved three to one, that 18% increase. Second, as I said before, on the budget, there's a few areas that I don't support. One is where we continue, and I understand it's in the budget. Charlotte told me it's 30, 40,000 for subsidizing events in the town for police and garbage-type expenses, where those events are making money. So in a sense, we're profiting, you know, that event's activity, where they, for the good, they give out scholarships, they do things, and that's all good. But I don't know that, I don't believe that should be from the taxpayers of the town. I think it should be in the pricing for each of those events. Additionally, I was disappointed to not see some money in our town budget for playground equipment improvements or replacement at Lake June Park. I've asked for that repeatedly in the year and a half that I've been on council and to take it from reserves, but I was told, no, those reserves are for emergency purposes. Therefore, we need it for cash flow, we need it for other things. You don't understand, it took us years to build up these reserves. And I was just trying to get 100,000 or so for improved playground equipment at the park, and there's nothing in this budget for Lake June Park for that. But, but that's okay, because later we can do a budget amendment. We can always come forward and do a budget amendment at some point in the future. My last, and I'll, this is emotional for a lot of people, is I don't believe that this budget should have a 1.6 million line item for building a new police department, that the bids came in at 2.3, 2.4, and 2.7 million dollars, that we know is going to be a lot higher. I was told when I brought it up at the one council meeting, that's okay, we're going to work with them, and we think we can get it down to 1.6 to 1.9. We also now have gone and asked for a legislative grant for $800,000. And the question at the last meeting was, what happens if we don't get it? How can we sign a bid for 2.3 million if we don't have the funds? Interesting to note, the comments were, well, we will take it from the general fund and the infrastructure, which is completely opposite when I ask for playground equipment during the years. People on, up on this dais have said, we need it for emergency, we cannot deplete those funds. If we have a hurricane, we have to use it, et cetera. My comment for a $1.6 million budget line item, it could be amended later, once we get all the funding, once we understand the rationale, the need versus the want, the options. Are there other options that we could use? We've talked about this building was approved in 2018 to also include the police department. There's reasons that didn't happen. That's, that's fine. Let's just be transparent and get them out to the public. Second is the cost it would be to renovate the current one. It's got to be a lot less to make it the standard that we need than 2.4 or more million dollars. Or is there another option to buy another building? So I just want to go on record to continue to say I oppose the tax increase. I don't think it's good government and fiscal responsibility, conservative to increase the taxpayers when we have that much money, and now worse, that much money in reserves, and now worse, saying, but we can spend that money in reserves on a building that is still unknown by looking at options and looking at what are our alternates did we consider before we would go forward and completely deplete tax reserves, which is a big concern to me. So those are my comments. I know they'll go nowhere with this council, but I want to make sure that it's in the record. You know, the CFO is talking about of Florida. What do the taxpayers want? Looking out for the taxpayers, and, and you all know, when I got elected, I visited homes, I talked to people, and so I will continue to stand up and speak for the taxpayers, for the business owners of the Town of Lake Placid. I am proud to be in this position and represent them, knowing that it's not a popular role, but it's something that I signed up to do, I committed to them to do, and I plan on continuing to do. So I will fight for the taxpayers. Or if it's something they don't want, I can at least go talk to them and explain why. Because when I made a decision, it was an informed decision. Because when I made a decision, it was an informed decision. Thank you.
Don't, don't we have to do the motion first? Before I go? No, was a motion and a second?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, any other comments from the podium? All right, well now I'll take it to the audience.
Beth Dagnan, for the record, I'm just questioning, my knowledge of Highlands County already gives this town $100,000 from RPAC, so you're all asking for this extra 100,000 in addition to what you get from Highlands County? Because RPAC gives you each municipality $100,000 each year. Though I haven't been to one of their county meetings recently, I don't think they've taken that away from you, have they?
So, so it's not RPAC, Highlands County gives the town $125,000 as they do Sebring and as they do, and that's for maintenance of the park, pretty much upkeep, maintenance of the park, all of our parks.
So you're wanting?
That's different than RPAC. RPAC, we haven't asked for money for playground.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
And just for RPAC, just on that note, is I had even asked for, because RPAC you have to match. So I said, well, let's go after 150,000, and the most you can get from RPAC is 75,000. You can get two RPAC grants a year now for 75,000. And my request during the budget time was, let's put 75,000 in for Lake June Park and then go after 150 with RPAC. It didn't go through.
All right.
My name is Sharon Hudson, 490 Briar Glen, Ray Lake Placid. I've been a member of this community since 1959. You guys do nothing, and please, I am not very politically correct when I say what I say. I'm a country girl. I think the town is not supporting the local people the way they should. You're asking for more money, more money, more money. You're putting the money not into the playgrounds that we need. You're not putting the money into the town structure that we need. You're not letting new people come to town to invest in our community. You're making it very difficult for those of us that own a business in town to survive. You've got ordinance for signs that don't make sense. You have nothing that brings the other people into town, a few things. But I think you need to rethink what you're spending the money on that these people are having to sacrifice to give to you. The children's playground, we need to take care of our children. And I fully agree with you as to what you said. I believe in everything that you said, and I am proud of what you do. But some of the town council seems to have their own agenda of what they want. It's not what the community wants. And you need to rethink what you're doing up here on this. You've been voted on and asked to do something, then let's look out for the community as a whole. Simple said.
We don't want to debate, I don't mean to cut you off, that we, this is a correction to the budget that was duly processed. But I have to add a comment about the parks. In the CRA, we put as top priority Spruce Park and Dahl Hall Park. You haven't seen it yet, but they are top priorities in the CRA work list. So, but we haven't forgotten the parks.
Okay, but the timeframe that we get to do these things are, you want to get a, somebody, spend money for somebody to give you a bid on something, not a bid, but somebody else to come in and tell you what to do with your money when you already know what needs to be done. Let's not take forever to do what we need to do.
I agree.
And if we need to take some of that money from the CRA and hire an employee, we should take that money and do that. If the town is overloaded with what they've got, and since I'm here, this building was bought and was told in the time that you bought it that this is where the police department would be and there was enough room. You've got offices in here that are huge, combine two people in those offices, and you'd have money for a police department. Thank you.
Okay, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, and I will just say for the record, I will never take swing sets over public safety. And I think that I am protecting the town by choosing public safety over swing sets, but swing sets will happen, but I will approve this, yes.
Councilmember Charles?
No, and it's playgrounds, not swing sets. Correct the record, playground.
Okay, now go to C, ordinance number 2025-09, Grace Bible Church of Highlands County. Again, ordinance number 2025-09, an ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid amending zoning classification of a property located at 580 East Interlake Boulevard bearing parcel ID P31363007A01100040 from R-1A Single Family Dwelling District to CDPD Limited Commercial District with a planned development to allow for a church and church uses and added section 160-23 of the Code of the Town of Lake Placid entitled Grace Bible Church, providing for severability, providing for convict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Dana Riddell, Town Planner, for the record. Proof of publication is part of the file, and this hearing has been duly noticed. I, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so I will be going down the line and asking if Town Council has had any ex parte communication, starting with Councilwoman Everhart?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Worley. Have you had any ex parte?
I have talked to Dustin on a couple occasions, so yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I need to correct that, I did talk to Mr. Woods a month or two ago.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holbrook?
No.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hayes?
I also talked to Dustin, but it was several months ago, just in general about the concept.
Thank you. Ms. Charles?
Same, I talked to Mr. Woods.
Thank you very much. Okay, so as duly noted, the hearing tonight is for ordinance 2025-09, hearing number LPTC 25005. The owner of this property is Grace Bible Church, and the agent is Ministry Solutions Group under the care of Terry Campbell. He's not here this evening, but Dustin Woods, as the pastor of this church, is available for any questions as we move on through the hearing process. The address of this property is 580 East Interlake Boulevard, Lake Placid. At first reading, because the maps hadn't been updated, we were showing the property line not extending as far west as it should have been. So please note, these maps are up to date and accurate. The applicant is requesting a rezoning for the subject property from Single Family Dwelling District R1A to Limited Commercial Plan Development District C2PD to allow for a church and church uses, which will subsequently add chapter 1, I'm sorry, section 160-23 of the Code of the Town of Lake Placid entitled Grace Bible Church Plan Development Ordinance. As we've noted in the past, this property has an inconsistent future land use and zoning, and in order for there to be a change of use on the property from the existing university, or I'm sorry, just college, still equally as important, but not just a college, but from a college to a church, it requires consistency with zoning. The proposed zoning shown on this map would be C2PD. There, they provided a site plan, at which point they've labeled what the buildings will be used for. Now, without getting too redundant, I do just want to point out some changes that have occurred since first reading. And because we didn't have a local planning agency meeting in September, we read these hearings, first reading, local planning agency, and now second reading. So between first reading and the local planning agency meeting, the church came forward and said they did a detailed dive into the sign code, and they wanted to make sure that they made any requests for deviation from signs that they might have. So they proposed additional language, which would allow them to have up to six temporary sandwich board signs. They requested this because what they're proposing is really like a church campus. And in accordance with our sign code, these sandwich board signs cannot be placed on the sidewalk. They have to be placed on the property. Even if you have multiple buildings, our sign code only allows one sandwich board per property. And so they're asking to be able to use sandwich board signs to direct people around the campus. If they're having a Bible study, they might post on their campus, you know, that a Bible study is this way with an arrow. In addition to the monument signs, so they have the South Florida State College Monument Sign, they'll switch that sign face out for their church's copy, which is their language. And every property is allowed to have one ground mounted sign for each road frontage. This property is surrounded by the road on three different sides, so they can have up to three ground mounted signs. They're asking to have four, and including the existing sign. And the way that the site plan is reflected, they are close to the buildings, and they're really meant to be for maps of the campus, so they're not meant to be read from off premise. They're to, again, direct people throughout the campus. Item C would be to allow two banner signs. As we've discussed in the past, the sign code is something that has come before council a lot. And banners are prohibited in the Town of Lake Placid. So unless you have a new business and you post the banner for the first 30 days at the grand opening of the new business, this church is requesting to be able to have two banners on Interlake for 21 consecutive days each calendar year, not to exceed 24 square feet. So those are the deviations that are being requested. I have copies of, a copy of the sign site plan on the screen. The rectangles indicate the temporary banners. The trapezoids indicate locations for potential sandwich board signs. The blue rectangles indicate the ground mounted signs, which would be campus maps. And the light blue rectangle indicates the existing monument sign. This is an example of one of the ground mounted signs that they currently use at their Sebring campus. And the renderings have not changed from first reading, but they're included as part of the presentation, if there's any questions. At the September 15th, 2025 hearing, the Town Council voted unanimously to approve the hearing on first reading. And at the October 6th, 2025, regular local planning agency meeting, the LPA voted unanimously to recommend that Town Council approve and adopt hearing number LPTC 25005RZ, ordinance number 2025-09, on second reading. The local planning agency was made aware of the changes regarding the sign code, so that include, that is included in their recommendation. Motion options are available on the screen. My staff recommendation is also available on the screen. And I'm available for any questions, as well as the pastor and applicant, Mr. Woods. I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Yes, since our last meeting, and I'm, that's my territory there, I live there and have property there. There's a couple of things, the banners. I think if we approved the banners for this project, we have over 400 people that pay business tax. We would have so many banners everywhere, they'd just be rotating. So, and I think the way, I think this has been mainly that if you, and unfortunately, we don't have our police chief here who's gone through this for years, but I think what happens if you're going to have Bible school, which most of the churches have Bible school in the summer, they have like, they can have a grand opening sign, which is 30 days. I think there's other avenues for the banners. Otherwise, we're going to have, every business, people that pay business tax are going, I have a banner. I mean, I can have a banner out in front of my place. And we can't do it, and it's not that I don't want to do it for them, and I love Bible school. I went to Bible school when I was young, every, every year. But I think that can be covered under maybe some of the ordinance. And then Councilmember Hayes had brought up the residential parking. And I did recall during a hurricane when the, one of the schools couldn't have classes there. Unfortunately, it's called standing, which is, people, if you look at the middle school and the elementary school with people picking up their kids, that was downtown Lake Placid. Okay, so you couldn't get to your own property. And you would think that parent, people would be kind and generous and make room, but they didn't. And then the extra people for the classrooms also blocked in, totally blocked in properties. So I'm suggesting, as a modification, to say no parking or standing. Standing is a term that says you can't sit there and wait for someone. So no standing or parking in the residential areas, I think that's fair. The, the people that come and they're, they're kind and generous, I don't think anybody cares back there. I don't care on my residential property if they park. But to block, it's just because it happened before. And unfortunately, it did happen, and Councilmember Hayes was totally correct with concerning the residential area. So I would say no parking or standing in the residential area for, for the automobiles. And then banners would fall under the other ordinances. And those are my only two things. Everything else, I think, is wonderful. I love them as neighbors. They're going to be right by me. So I think that clears up everything that we could possibly cover, unless anybody has something else.
I do. On the banners, it's, it's an annual camp, right? So can you, I mean, and, and I'm very interested in that, I saw youth camp. So once a year, you're going to have youth camp, can you talk a little about that?
Yeah, that was just a preemptive request, knowing that every summer, we host what we call Kids Camp.
Yeah.
We actually only do it three days long, because we really just doubled down on that effort. And Sebring, at our Sebring location, we typically have around 500 kids and a couple hundred volunteers, scaled down for Lake Placid naturally. I imagine it's still serve several hundred kids in the Lake Placid community during those few days. So those banners would simply be put out, as you saw on that rendering, the three weeks prior to, just letting the community know that it was happening. It's a free event that they'd be able to sign their kids up for and drop them off during that window.
So I don't see that, that all of a sudden 400 businesses are going to want to do a banner, because that's an event banner. You know, we, we put one up in the Vane Park for the boat races, right? And that was never approved, it just all of a sudden this gigantic banner appeared. There's, so I personally don't see that. I, I can understand you're trying to advertise, I don't know if 21 days is the right amount, if it's 14 or what it is, but I see that as an event banner for a special event. That's a good thing for the town, and it's, it's also supporting the youth in that. It's my comments there. My first reaction on the signs was, whoa, what's that going to do to our code? But as you broke it down, I didn't see those ones as signs versus maps. They were campus maps of who goes where, so it looked very nice, I didn't have a problem with those. So I personally don't have a problem with this, you know, with the you know, with the changes that include the signs. And I know we're working on a sign workshop and all of that. But we've been working on it for almost a year. And that's one of the things I always get back from the businesses too, is the whole sign thing sometimes doesn't allow the advertisement that you need. So I don't have any problems with anything. I really like and appreciate what they're doing. It's really going to, you know, dress that whole area up. So I'll go ahead and make the motion that sta, and staff is recommending to go ahead and, I mean, that's what the staff recommended motion is, is, you know, whether it's a temporary deviation or deviation we need to do. But I'll go ahead and make the motion that staff is recommending that we make to move to recommend approval and adoption of hearing number LPTC 25005-RZ, ordinance number 2025-09 on second reading. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Seeing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
No, only because it affects the people in the neighborhood.
Thank you, council.
Okay. Next, ordinance number 2025-14, repeal of chapter 107 of the code of the town of Lake Placid. Ordinance of the town, ordinance of Lake Placid Town Council repealing chapter 107 entitled Peace and Good Order of the Town Code and Providing for an Effective Date.
So I'm going to start off saying that I, we've only had this since like Thursday afternoon, whatever. And so it's really important for our codes. And I just see things in here that, like, you can kill squirrels. You can't kill squirrels and birds, but you can kill birds of prey. I didn't understand that one. And there's other things in here that I think that I would like until next meeting to be able to address. And there's some things in there that I would like to put in there. Like I did a campaign to get rid of Brazilian pepper, which is an invasive plant. We did that in Lake Placid, and we were very successful, except along the railroad. Anyway, I would like to make that a code. Like, I know that sounds bizarre, but if you care about the environment, and everybody got on board, except the railroad and even the J.C.'s cleaned up around the schools and stuff to get rid of Brazilian pepper because it's very invasive. And we have been doing a good job of getting rid of it, trust me. I had a, I had a Earth Day, we gave away seedling oaks. One of those is down by the water plant and growing big. Anyway, I'm just saying that we've, we've really tried to get rid of this. So I'm just saying, I just think it, why would we say you can, you, you can, you can't kill squirrels and other birds, but you can kill birds of prey? Some of this is just minutia. But I just think if I had had more time since Thursday afternoon to change our codes, I think we should look at them. And there's some other things downtown as well, that's where I live, that we need to look at as far as code enforcement and things like that to make it part of our, part of our, what we want to see our town look like. Because this is important. So I would just like to table this until I have more time to look at it. You have more time to look at it. You can actually suggest a code if you want to for something you see going on, you know, in our area and our town that you would like to see changed. I just don't think since Thursday is long enough. And I know if Mr., Mr. Harris was here, he would say, oh, well, it's only first reading. But I just, it's very important that we go through every one of these.
It's second reading.
If you want to suggest another code.
It's a second reading. And this is just repealing code 107. This is, all this is doing is repe, it looks, it looks kind of confusing because it's repealing completely 107. But then there was a whole second section with all this red. And the reason the red was is because these are the state codes that are in place today. So that, this one I see is very simple. And, and there's reasons we're doing it, right? Because of that First Amendment and things like that. So this is second reading that was already approved at first reading. And it's just 107. So to your point, absolutely, we have other codes that need to be addressed. And I think Dana has a lot of them on her list of things to do. But Charlotte, correct me, this is just repealing 107, something we need to do as the town. And, and, and the importance of it is because a lot of it is, is violating state laws that have been made over the years.
Okay, there was just a lot more information. I just didn't want to prove something that, and I understand that because we almost got sued over that. So I do think that's a good one. But I just didn't want to go ahead and combine that one with other code issues. And I wasn't clear on it, and I had no one to ask. So if all we're doing is repealing the code that got us into trouble to begin with, the First Amendment, I am for that one.
And, and, okay. I am in favor of cleaning up our code. But if we just delete all of 107, then if somebody wants to say, well, what, what's the, what's the rules on disturbance of the peace? It would be easier if you could keep that heading in there and say, reference state statute, blah, 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 rather than obliterating everything. Because people won't know to look to the state code or what chapter to look to. So just include the state code by reference under each heading. And I think that would.
But that could apply to all of our muni code.
Well, so be it. Yeah, well, whatever.
No, no, all of our muni code. Because there's a lot of things in every section of the muni code that we don't repeat what the Florida legislature laws is.
Yeah, well, first of all, not to be in conflict with the state laws. But then secondly, if I need to know what to do about a certain thing, I won't know where to look in the state code. So just put a little line in there, see statute, see statute such and such.
Thank you.
I agree.
I don't. I think that that's a lot more work that we need to do. Charlotte, what is your position on that? Yours and I guess attorney Harris here, but it's now, you know, his backup.
When Dana and I reviewed this, we thought along the same lines as Councilwoman Eberhart, that there was probably a little bit more that we needed to look at instead of just pulling it out. But I think for the sake of getting it done, that may have been why it was pulled out in its entirety. But in the conversation, and Dana, you can chime in at any point. But we took the lead with the town attorney on this one.
I would second what Charlotte says. There's, and I might actually even turn to Captain Troutman over there. Like, for instance, when I was working through code enforcement, we, I don't know, I'm sure everyone noticed there was an adult arcade that came up on U.S. 27. And it kind of slipped through the cracks because they come to us and they say, hey, can I open an arcade in the C-1 district? And we're like, yeah, you can open an arcade, you know, in the C-1 district. And later come to find out, they called it an adult arcade, and it was gambling, and it was what would be considered a disorderly house, which is covered under section 107-2. Now, the way that was handled was really not through code enforcement. We opened a case. We knew it was there, but we passed it over to the P.D., who also passed it over to the state. So in that regard, I saw how, at a local level, it would have been much more difficult for us to enforce. We could work hand in hand. And our police department at that time, please correct me if I'm wrong, was working hand in hand with the state. But on a code enforcement level, that was very difficult for us to pursue. And it wouldn't have gotten the same amount of consequence or attention as the state coming down. Now, the moment, like probably a week before the state was going to come and do a raid, they vanished. I don't know how they knew, but they were gone. So just like that type of example where, you know, it might be worth really taking a second look to see if any, any of these codes could be sustainable at a local level or if they all really truly are preempted to the state.
No, I, I wasn't saying that we should do the enforcing. But just for somebody that says, I don't know if I can do this or not. I'll check the town code. Well, if there's nothing in the town code because the whole 107 is obliterated, I won't, I'll say, well, they don't say I can't.
How are we going to address those areas and make it easier for the residents to be able to know where to look? Exactly.
Bob Swain for the record. I am certainly new to this issue. And I don't know that there's anything that would, any urgency that would require you taking action on this tonight. You have time to think about it. I would encourage you not to include every potential Florida state reference regarding, there's about three linear feet of statutes that could be applied that you would, might spend the rest of time trying to incorporate into the town's ordinances to include all of those references. I'd certainly find with taking time to further consider this.
Well, how, how I would envision it, so you look at like 107-1, Disturbance of the Peace, Illegal Assembly. One line item under that, see Florida statute 877.03.
There's Florida statutes on most everything you can imagine. That, I don't know that you want to be the sort of central repository to direct people to all the applicable laws. If you want to, it's your code, you absolutely can do that.
And, and that's why I disagreed. Because if you go to the package that's included with all the black and the red, it's, all the red is saying for each of those paragraphs, here's a Florida statute that applies. And so this is only one, 107. I'm just thinking of all of our muni code and all of the time to start pointing backwards. You know, if there's something that's critical, okay, fine. But mine is more the administrative effort and then trying to keep it right. Because once that changes, then we got to make sure that our changes. So that's where I was at. It's the duplicative effort is if there is a state law, a federal law, state law, and a county law. We shouldn't be duplicating it unless there's an important reason. Or then caution on trying to help everybody become a one-stop shopping on any code. So. It's, it's, it's a challenge, right? You want to help the public, but at the same time, you've got to help the, you know, balance the staff administrative effort to do it. Well, I'll leave it to the attorneys and the staff to see how they want to do it.
So Mr. Swain, are you, you're advising against us putting the state code in here?
That is correct. I would not include cross-references to state code, county code, federal law.
Right, right. So you're advising against that.
I, I would, I would advise not to include all the state statutes that could potentially be applicable to everything that goes on in, in the town. Now, if you, if you want to table the consideration of this ordinance for this evening, you certainly can do that.
But why would we table it for?
If then, if someone wanted, a council member wanted more time to consider the effect of the repeal.
Can someone remind me why we are repealing this statute? Why are we doing this?
The, the genesis is that it's essentially adequately covered by state law.
So we just picked this out and decided that this one is covered by state law so we can take advantage of this and get rid of this one?
What brought that to attention, I'm not sure.
I mean, did we just throw a dart?
I think it was the First Amendment issue, right?
I understood it was a First Amendment issue. And he asked us to repeal one part of this. So I thought we would do that, and then we should review everything else as well. But I thought the point of this in the beginning, and I didn't realize it was, this is the second, I didn't realize it was the same thing because this is more comprehensive than just repealing that one part of the code. That I thought we were just repealing the part that was required, asked of us to repeal by somebody that was felt injured by our, our code. So we were going to repeal that one issue, and then we were going to look at everything else. Instead, we just, that's it. So I thought, well, why, I don't know how it turned into repealing one part of our code to doing all of this. So I just said, let's take a breather and let's repeal. Okay, so let's repeal the part that we were asked to repeal, which everybody agreed should be repealed, and then go back and look at the rest of the, of the code.
Which part is that? I guess that's my question. Which is 107.1?
It was a First Amendment part of it. I, we, he had asked, I mean, we had, his attorney had asked us specifically to repeal one section of this, and that was it. We were asked to repeal one part of this.
What Mr. Harris said was when he went in and he looked at it at a deeper dive, he realized that because it was covered in the other areas, that it was something that we didn't necessarily need. However, we have to put something in because of the violation. This is the one that we received for the civil rights violation because of what's written in here that violates.
Where, where is the civil rights violation?
It's 107.1.
Some, some of the language that's in here is rather general obstruction of streets. Let's see.
You have to understand, I, I, I don't remember getting all of this information the last first reading. So maybe we did, I don't remember it. And I'm trying to pour through all of this changes. And I just thought I needed more time since Thursday afternoon to do that. I mean, I do understand what was required before to repeal the one violation of the First Amendment violation. And I'd like to do that. But I don't want to just, I don't know. It was just, you know, you have to understand, and I work too. So I don't have time to just, and I looked at this and I saw a lot of changes in here. And I, I mean, I just would like more time to ask questions and to, to look at it when we're changing a lot of our code. It looks like, to me. But maybe, maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
If it were tabled to the next board meeting, to the next town council meeting, Burton would have an opportunity to, Lord willing me here and be feeling better, explain to you why he thinks that the changes over and above what you thought you would see in this are appropriate. You can have more time to better understand what all it's covered. Obviously, you can vote for it tonight if you want, up or down. But if you wanted to have that additional time to better understand all, all of the background for this, you, you could table it to the specific date of your next town council meeting.
And whatever ordinance it was that we were asked to rescind, I would like to vote on that tonight. But the rest of everything else, I would like to wait on. Because if we were in violation of a code for the First Amendment, I'd like to change that tonight. But I don't see doing this, second reading. I don't know. And even, I don't know.
So, so again, just to clarify, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
And Charlotte, what I see is, okay, we have a priority from the First Amendment discussion and correspondence that we have outdated ordinance out there. And it needs to be deleted. And when Bert looked at it, he saw this whole section has all kinds of things in it that are, one, outdated, or two, already have a law against them. So no need to repeat it. I think what's happened this time to get it confused is the second package that has the language of the code and then a whole bunch of red. the language of the code and then a whole bunch of red, because when I read it at first, I'm like, is this replacing it? And it's no. What it's, it was helpful for me is as I read each of the paragraphs, then he or Charlotte gave, and these are the state codes today where they apply, so there's no, just like you can't hunt squirrels, well, there's a whole fishing and wildlife, and there's laws on when you can and what you can and what you have to do. So that's what I saw is, nothing, and help me out, Charlotte here, nothing different from first reading, except that whole second package, which I think was helpful, of these are all in red, these are the laws today. So why would we want, and in many cases, what we had is wrong, because it was in violation of state laws. So, is that correct, Charlotte and Mr. Swain, from what I think Bert was trying to do?
That's my understanding. Again, another option, if you want to, if you want to make sure you're taking care of the First Amendment concern this evening, you can pass this ordinance, repeal all of 107, and later decide if there are parts of it you'd like to add back in, you can do that then through your just sort of ordinary ordinance adoption process.
Right. And which would Debra B., on your original point, there's other codes that we need to have revised, we can work our way through those, but that's what I thought, this was an urgency, and that's why it kind of got walked down pretty fast, because of the correspondence we were getting, and why are we continuing to have our code be outdated on that First Amendment issue?
Mr. Swain, could you give us a motion to repeal the one that we were in trouble over on the First Amendment, and then we can just address all the rest of this later? I mean, could you just tell us the motion to repeal what we started with, to repeal that one, which we were asked to do?
I'm afraid I can't do it in a way that would make it clear exactly what action council's taking tonight. I think you can adopt ordinance 2025-14, which would repeal Chapter 107 in its entirety, and then look again to add things back as you may find appropriate to add back. I can't give you the sort of rifle shot, if you will, for what takes care of only the civil rights issue, but nothing over and above that this evening, because I can't verbalize it specifically. I can tell you, if you take care of the whole problem, you can.
No, I know, there was a letter.
You can add it back in later.
Yeah, there was a letter that said that, so whatever we should do, let's just move forward.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve and adopt on second reading ordinance 2025-14.
Do we have a motion in a second? Okay. Any other comments from the podium?
Just want to make sure that our town attorney is supporting this adopt today, and then separate.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the chief's not here, but was the chief in support of this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to hear you say that. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, we'll take it. The audience, any comments?
PM Pinterest, 12373, Lost Lake Drive. I, when I read the packet, I'm like, what is this? As a member of the public and how it read to me, and I read that it was a second reading, I don't remember the first one, it may have been on the agenda, I don't remember any discussion, I don't remember the red lines. I spent the whole time as, does this replace this? Is this over here? What is this? I go to the LPA committee meetings, this never was brought before the LPA. I'm not saying you'd want to spend five hours on going line by line. I'm just now hearing the reason was the First Amendment is the reason for this. In my opinion, when I was reading it, and I read it, but I didn't have time to, okay, what was presented the first time, what is presented now? Is, and is a word slipped in here? Does a paragraph change here? So that was, that was a big part of mine, in my concern, and then there's so much in there. Some of them are just 100-year-old laws that need to be taken care of. There was a newspaper article on that. Everybody gets that, you can't do this, you can't do that. But then you read a little bit deeper into some of those things, and I was concerned with them. If you want to move forward, you can, but as a public member, it, for me, it wasn't clear, clear-cut. It's red line, we didn't have it in the packet, okay, this is what originally it was, the red lines mean, that means state statute, so we're not putting it in there, we're going to list, here's the thing that would just, how it's going to be moving forward. And I think if you're going to adopt something like that, you need clear, concise direction to the public, so they understand what they're reviewing and what y'all will be voting on. Thank you.
Well, if I don't understand, and I'm part of the public, I guess, I, whatever.
All right, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
No.
Councilmember Worley?
No.
Mayor Hopper?
Yes. Okay. Then we go to E, ordinance 2025-15, repeal of the solicitation portion of Chapter 117 of the Town of Lake Placid. And ordinance of the Town of Lake, Town, ordinance of the Lake Placid Town Council, amending Town Code Section 117-1 regarding definitions, repealing Town Code Sections 117-3-5 regarding soliciting and providing for an effective date.
This applies for the same reason.
So did, this is first reading or second reading?
Second reading.
This is likely the First Amendment issue.
Yes.
This is what you can and can't walk up to somebody's house and talk about.
Correct.
Yeah, we have no problem with that, so I'll make a motion that we adopt on second reading ordinance 2025-15, repeal the solicitation portions of Chapter 117 of the Town of Lake Placid.
A second then.
This is the one we really needed to do.
So we got a motion in a second. You have the comments from the podium?
So is 117.3 about posted residences covered by state law?
I believe there is a state law regarding peddling generally and solicitors generally. It's been 10 years or better since I've looked at it. City of Sebring had an ordinance on solicitation and gotten a dust-up with the newspaper about it, and so we, when we found out the state had a statute, we said, "Never mind, we don't have an ordinance, go fight with the state over this."
So, yeah, this is the one about if I have, if it's, the part that was deleted is that if my residence is posted, they cannot solicit, so that it's being deleted and that is being covered by state law.
And certainly, private landowners are allowed to allow or disallow people to come on their property to, for whatever purpose.
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to the town manager in Sebring about this, and I think you all covered something very similar to this that we just went through, and that's the one I thought we were focusing on, not everything else, so.
And again, I mean, I'll go along with it, but I guess if I was a citizen and somebody was on my lawn, and I wanted to look in the town code to say, "You can't do this," I'd be so nice just to be able to say, "See state law, such and such," because if it's not here, then people will assume, "Well, it's not in your code that I can't do that."
I understand, but people never have a right to go on somebody's property and stay there if they're asked to leave.
I agree.
Outside law.
Yeah, I agree, that's the way it is, but as a homeowner, I'm telling, "Oh, I can't see what it says you can't do this."
Ms. Everhart's just saying, it would be nice to have the backup of what the state law says to back up our code. I get it.
What, we can do it tonight for expediency, and then as you say, add it back in if we need to reference something else, if you'd reference the state. So for expediency, let's do it tonight.
Keep us out of trouble.
Do we, we did? Okay. All right, any other comments? Take it to the audience. Bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
All right, now we go to six, action agenda. A, request for consideration to waive the parking requirement for a change in use at 295 East Interlake, Lake Placid, Florida.
Good evening, Dana Riddell, Town Planner for the Record. As noted in the packet, there's a new business interested in utilizing an existing building at 295 East Interlake Boulevard. The applicant wishes to change the existing building from the Department of Revenue code. That's just, for some background, how we establish what the existing use of a building is, is determined by the property appraiser who assigns Department of Revenue code to the property. So there, the existing DOR code is a store, and they're requesting to convert it to a restaurant slash cafe, which would be the new DOR code, and they're going to utilize approximately 520 square feet of the existing building as guest service area. The change in use results in an increased parking requirement, which would require eight off-street parking spaces. This is something, our downtown parking area, it's come up in conversation a couple times. This is something that will be covered by the master plan, and this is one of the challenges that businesses face when they're entering our downtown area. Buildings that exist can remain, and they can continue for the use that they were assigned, but when they change their use, especially to something that's considered more intense, like a restaurant instead of a store, which increases foot traffic and can serve more people at one time, so it increases the number of parking spaces required, generally has to go through a change of use process, or just confirm that they have enough parking spaces on site. Like, you may have heard, TAVs will be going through a change of use coming up soon, and it likely won't have to come before council for any parking reduction, because they're changing their use to something less intense, but they will bring certain things up to standard. So the applicant is here tonight, I prepared a little bit more in the staff report of an explanation of why and how they can request this waiver, and it has to do with them being located in the historic parking district. And he prepared a parking study, which basically meant he went out and he counted the number of parking spaces that were available during his proposed business hours over a two-week period, and I have the proposed business hours included in the package. But during that time, the average of all of those available parking spaces in a one-block radius was an 85% availability rate. So I'm available for any questions, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor at this time.
I have a question. Am I to understand that this, that you're opening a restaurant and going to do the cooking for the restaurant in a food truck outside?
That was the proposal from the fire marshal, and that is something that we will have to review with the new food truck regulations. I believe with some modifications to the site, that he would be able to park a food truck in the back of the property over a new concrete pad, and use that as the kitchen, and use the guest service, the building as the guest service area.
So basically, what you're saying, the kitchen would be in the food truck, and then they would bring the food into the building to, that's where everybody would sit and eat.
Correct.
So basically, in the back would be the food truck producing the food, bringing it inside and serving people.
Correct.
So we've just, we've just repealed the solicitation part, so we're kind of allowing food trucks now. And now this is, this is like a food truck on steroids, because the food truck is in the back, and the serving area is through the restaurant, and they can sit in the restaurant, so it's not like other food trucks where they have to have a, if they want to do that, they have a tent and picnic table out there. Now you have the alley, I trust you're going to tell them that they can't deliver food directly from the food truck out into the alley, because now you're going to obstruct traffic in the alley. You're nodding your head, what does that mean?
You could restrict that the food truck would only be used to produce food for the restaurant itself, or the storefront. You could do that and not have a food truck out back where you're having people come there too. Is that, their intent, I think, was, and I don't know, because I've not talked to them, so yours, I think their intent is they want to just put a food truck out back so they can cook out back, which is under the health rules, and then bring the food inside. I don't know how that works with the health department. I guess they have to get permission to do that, but you could restrict it that they can't have people coming up to the food truck in the back if you wanted to, for the parking.
They're here, right? Can we have them, kind of, maybe it'd be better to have them describe, welcome.
Thank you. So, yeah, there's going to be no food served directly from the food truck, think of it more as a mobile kitchen. It's going to be parked there, no one's going to go up to it. With barbecue, you pretty much cook all the food morning of and day before, so everything's going to already be cooked, brought inside to serve.
And this is on, on Interlake?
Yes, ma'am.
I looked at the map, I'm familiar with that. Where are you with reference to Home Run Cafe?
I think it's like two or three doors down.
It's how much?
Two or three doors down.
Two or three doors down. Don't we have, we have some sort of a regulation with reference to having a food truck that is within a certain area of another restaurant?
Not at this time. The last time that the Central Florida Regional Planning Council came with their proposed changes, a decision was not made, and they have to go through first and second reading again. And they have to amend the proposed changes to reflect the requests from council, and that might have been one of the changes that was not captured in the last round of revisions.
So the food truck that we sent to the alley behind at Journal Plaza, the food truck that used to be out front, now they have to be in the alley, I thought that was because, or at least partly because, they were too close to another business?
That was because they were parking in the town right of way.
They were in that, but I thought that, yes, I know that was part of it, but I thought the fact that they were too close to another restaurant was also part of it.
No, ma'am.
Because then the Mordi Nedis came up and said, "No, that's okay, we like them." So there had to be some issue for Mordi Nedis to come up and say that. They were parked within a certain distance of an intersection. Yeah, I know that. I know that. I don't think it was proximity. I get that. I don't think we have any codes on restaurants located, they could be right next to each other, I don't.
Correct.
This is a very interesting concept, though, and I see this in my travels to Oregon and also California, and so it's a mobile kitchen, right? But you go, so from the front of Interlake, you've got barbecue, right? What is the name of it?
Pork chops, barbecue.
Pork chops, okay. But you go in, and the customers really don't know where their food's coming from. They're going to order from a menu, somebody's going to disappear out back and bring it. My question is, back to the permanent, are you saying then, behind the building, there would be a slab that, okay, so that would fit in with what we're trying to do, the change for the food truck there? And then second, just curious, is, do you see it as being mobile? Is it going to leave and go to the grocery store and get all your stuff and come back? So will it be, it's pretty much, you will be going and getting, just like a kitchen, right?
Yes, ma'am. I'm just going to take my personal truck, go get food when I need it.
Yeah, so I don't see the concern of traffic in the back alley.
If I do leverage it as a food truck or food trailer ever in the future, it would not be in the Town of Lake Placid.
So eventually, technically, you could take the wheels off of it, permanently put it there.
It's a detached kitchen.
As a detached kitchen, yeah. Maybe the word "mobile kitchen" with what he's describing is inaccurate, it's more a detached kitchen. Dana, you've got to have an objection to that somehow.
Yeah.
All right, there you go. Could you verbalize that for us?
Sure, so we-
Sure, so, we couldn't do a detached kitchen with the wheels taken off, because it wouldn't meet the architectural design standards, it would be a fully metal building. Unless he put a, some kind of facade on it.
So he's got to keep the wheels on?
No problem.
Keep those wheels on.
Less work.
And the wheels have to be in good operating, working order.
Yeah, they can't be fake, or flat. Has, has, have you got approval from fire?
So I spoke with fire, I met the marshal, he came out, and the reason why I have to do the mobile kitchen is because I am leasing the property, the current owners don't want me putting any holes through the new roof for event hood, so we wanted to go at the back wall, but fire code dictates they have to be 10 feet from openings or other buildings, so their suggestion to me was the mobile kitchen.
So it was kind of their idea?
Yes, ma'am.
Dana, have, or Charlotte, has anybody got any feedback from any of the neighboring businesses, or any?
No, this isn't the type of hearing that requires notices to surrounding property owners, it's, on the code, it simply says to get permission from town council, it doesn't, I don't know how Mr. Swain would categorize that, but I don't think that's a public hearing.
This is only regarding the parking requirement.
Okay, parking.
The waiver of the requirement, have sufficient off-street parking there because of the historic nature of the area.
Right, thank you.
It's not a zoning change, it's just asking for a variance on parking, but it does involve what they're going to do, so.
And at some point in the future, it's our hope that we can have a historic district, which this would then be in conformance with that. And that was my comfort, right? Because that's what we want for this, the downtown area, to be a historic district, and give us the claim to fame and all of the additional benefits that that has.
Yeah, I don't, are you planning on serving food out of your food truck to people that come up?
No, ma'am.
So you wouldn't mind being restricted, that you're only going to put food into the restaurant?
Correct.
I think that would help a lot, because that alleyway is used by delivery people and everything else, and it's not very wide.
No, I don't want any people going to the back.
Right, so maybe we could do that with the restriction, that you're not having additional people coming to the back to use a food truck, but we would just be like you said, which is a great name for it, what did you call it, the exterior kitchen?
Mobile kitchen.
My turn, maybe? I know we're talking about parking, but we're also talking about a change of use or something. I happen to know, or a pretty, pretty good idea, that another restaurant door on the same street, very next to where you're going, also has a food truck, and may well park it in back, and he has a kitchen inside. Now, can you visualize this, that each restaurant that we have would like to have, would love to have, an outside kitchen, as opposed to having a fire hood? That's a pain in the rear, and it's very expensive. So let's move, you know, let's move our kitchen outside, and my gosh, we can have a lot more place for people to eat. So I'm just afraid that we're start, setting a dangerous precedent, and, and I know this is parking, so I don't want to, I don't want to say, oh, yes, great, you can have your parking, but you can't have your food truck, and you can't have your business. So, you know, I just want to be clear that I'm visualizing a historic Lake Placid, but I don't know whether we have a different history in, in the head, because what, I'm not, I, I don't see how Historic Lake Placid has food trucks on the back of every restaurant front that we got. Just saying. And I'm also afraid, I know what you saw, I saw your parking thing, I was, I was interested to see it, but I'm just curious of how that's going to affect the other restaurants, if they are open at night, there's a restaurant across the street that is open at night, there's, there's a Purple Iris is open at night, the Mexican restaurant next to Lockhart's is open at night, and so, these folks have to have parking too, and, and yes, you, you got, I get this, you know, but, I'm just saying, I think we're going down a dangerous street there.
I wouldn't want you, I know this is just on parking tonight, but I think we're thinking ahead, we wouldn't want you to get approved for parking, and then, a month from now, somebody says, oh, no, you can't, because of whatever.
Right, that's what I just said, yeah. I just don't want to.
But as far as parking, we need, I don't know, this is always a mess. You can't, just because there are restaurants nearby that need parking, you can't preclude another, let's say it was another restaurant going in, you can't preclude another conventional restaurant for going in, because there's somebody down the road that needs parking.
I think it's, it's helpful, I'm telling you, like the lacrosse mom said, it was so nice to come into town and meet at a small restaurant, instead of going taking her child to a fast food place. She just loved it. And I, I just think the more we have, the more people will come, it's kind of like you do car dealerships, or look at CVS and Walgreens, they're always like, across, because they, they create that downtown atmosphere. I, I think it's a good idea, maybe there should be a restriction, because I'm telling you, that alleyway cannot have people coming and getting food, it, it just won't work, it's not big enough, and it's really made to have deliveries and have, you know, that kind of access, not to a food truck. So, I think that we could move forward. And Ms. Charles, what did you call the exterior kitchen, what did you call it, you had a term, it was perfect.
I just kept saying a mobile kitchen is what it is.
Okay, a mobile kitchen.
And again, what I heard him say was, it's, the truck isn't going to come in and out of the alley, it's coming in, there it is, people aren't going to the truck, people probably won't even know the truck's there unless they come through the alley. It's, it's a barbecue coming in, the people order inside, correct me, this is what I'm just repeating, you know, what you said, the people come in, they sit down, take the order, somebody disappears.
Yes, ma'am.
Rather than go to the kitchen.
And it's just counter service, there's.
They, they then bring and serve them, you know, the food, and, and I agree, I just think a variety of restaurants is important, and, and it's attractive. I agree. I, I often look for a place to go out to eat at night, and I get tired of eating at the same places. I, I totally agree. However, I think we are opening a, a can of worms here by allowing a food truck to operate as a, what'd you call it, a mobile kitchen, or whatever? That California term kind of threw me, but.
No, I just say California and others, they have this word.
Exterior kitchen. Ms. Dana, could you help us with that word, so we can make a motion, like if we were to approve a variance in parking, to allow these people to have, whatever you want to call it, a mobile kitchen that doesn't go anywhere? A, an exterior kitchen, separate from the building, with no, the only people coming there would be through the front door, through the restaurant, is there a way to wordsmith that?
Because like, like, Ms. Everhart and I both have said, we, we'd love to have your business, and that, I think it's a great thing, and I would go there. But, I don't want to say, say to you tonight, well, we'll give you a variance on the parking, and then, oh, but by the way, we're not going to allow the food truck, now that we're not allowing you to do business the way you proposed to do business. So, we're talking about more than just parking, but I just feel like we're opening a can of worms if we allow people to have food trucks operating as their kitchen, because I could picture, oh, three or four or six restaurants in Lake Placid and the town, that would probably jump on that bandwagon in a heartbeat.
Well, no, we, we also have, at Preacher's Place, aren't they going to have a food truck?
They already have one.
A standalone food truck on their property?
Where is this?
It already is, three days.
It is already, three days.
Yeah, so, so, so there you go.
They have, they have, and especially if he's willing not to serve out the back way.
Yeah, I don't want to serve out.
I just think, yeah, yeah, down at the new, down by the Christian school, he has a food truck, he has a required bathroom, so he's allowed to do that on his property. So, if we, if we do this, and then each case can be taken separately, each variance is a variance. So, this will be our first one, but I, I like the idea, I wouldn't even mind people sitting outside with some umbrellas in the back, as long as there's not going to be people coming up from the back and just using it as a food truck. I like the term.
Mobile kitchen.
Yeah, exterior kitchen.
A summer kitchen.
But can I, can I ask, Dana, or?
Summer kitchen.
Mr. Swain, is, this is parking?
Correct.
Is there, during his endeavor to get this completed, are there other checkpoints that he has to do with people?
He will.
Or whoever, I mean, on, on his concept of what he wants to do?
He'll likely pull an interior renovation permit through the building department, he will go through the Highlands County Engineering Department for traffic concurrency. He, since he has to pour a concrete pad 10 feet away from the building, he will likely receive an exemption from the commercial review process, because he's adding less than 2,000 square feet of impervious. So, there's a couple more steps that he would take.
Yeah, I guess where I'm going is, to try to all of a sudden tie a whole bunch of things into the parking. And, and how do you, how do you make that motion and do that with some of the concerns that I'm hearing some folks have here?
I think I can do it. I think I can do it, and I think I'm ready to make a motion and see if you guys like it or not. But, I say that we approve the parking variance with the conditions that the exterior condition, that exterior kitchen be located in the back of the building with no, other than the people that are in the front building, used as a restaurant, no other people will be coming and using the exterior kitchen except for the, inside the building itself, or maybe some patio people outside, that's it. Like, that, that exterior kitchen would only provide services for the front portion of the property, and in the back for maybe some patio, some patio exterior.
Eva's just shaking her head, like, and I am too. I mean, I think, I think your, your point is, the parking's okay, you want to put some conditions on who can access the truck in the back, right, so non-employees, maybe is a simple way to. I, I would be cautious on outdoor eatery and umbrellas and things like that on the back, I wouldn't put, I mean, if some point in the future they want to do that, that's, get back to council and do that, but right now, he's not planning on doing that.
Can I, I think I've summarized Councilwoman Worley's.
Okay.
Motion. It would be a motion to approve LPTC 25.007, to allow a parking waiver, with the condition that the mobile kitchen cannot serve any patrons other than those located within the stick-and-mortar building.
Does that meet you?
I'll make that motion.
So, then, just, just for clarity, Deborah, you're, you're not saying anything now about people being able to get this food and then, and then take it outside in the back and eat it? Right? Because if you can't serve from the food truck, here I am, I want to eat outside, so I'm going to come in to the counter, and I'm going to order, and I'm going to get my barbecue, and now I want to take it outside. Now I've got to take it out the front of the building, go around the building, oh, wait a minute, those buildings are contiguous, you can't go around, I've got to go down the block, and go around, and sit in my, on, on the picnic table that might be back there, I've, I've already.
No.
I got off the calories of the hamburger already.
I think that Dana excluded the rest of it, that I said you could have out back, it has to be in the, it has to be in the front part.
Yet the parking waiver is for 520 square feet of guest service area inside of the building.
Inside the building, nothing outside, anywhere, even around the back, nothing outside.
Correct.
And that's a star.
If someone gets takeout, I'm sure they could go eat it wherever, but.
Wherever, true, okay.
Yeah, and then, in the future.
I don't see that as a problem anyway, because every restaurant in town, you could get a takeout, and take it outside, and eat it wherever you wanted to. Or they could take it over to the park, you know. Personally, I think this is a, a great idea, I think we should let him try it, and there's nothing that says the next one that comes up that we have to okay it. If he does this, and it doesn't work, we'll know it right away. But, I want us to be friendly to our, our business owners, and I think we ought to give everybody a chance to, to, to do what they would like, as, as long as, as long as they follow the, follow the rules, and, you know, he's going to be governed by the health department, he's going to be inspected, everything's going to be up and up, so, yeah, as far as the parking, I'm in favor of that, so. Any other comments?
I don't know, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Yes. We had a motion, a second. Any other comments from the podium? Take it to the audience. Poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
No.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Good luck on the other steps.
Yeah, blessings. Blessings, I hope it works for you, and I hope I can eat down there.
No, B was taken off, right? Okay.
Okay, but, this thing with parking, we have to make sure we're consistent with everybody, because there have been, in the past, I've gotten feedback, well, inconsistencies.
That's, that's why I voted no, because we're setting a precedent right now, and now everybody that comes along that wants to have a mobile kitchen in the back, and, and they're in the same place, and they've got the same parking study, because they're, they're two doors down, now we have to approve that too. So, that's, that, and we have to, we have to go away with the parking requirement, so that's why I voted no for it.
Okay. All right, we'll go, town manager? You're good?
No, no, not, not good. I am good, but I have a date I need to look at and make sure I'm giving you the right date. We wanted to know, next Tuesday, the 28th, for a special meeting at 5:30. If everyone can check, it's the police department bid. It's going to be for the police department bid, special meeting. And we are working on putting together a snapshot of the finances, we will have that attentively, Rachel is working on that, but if you would like to meet to discuss that before the meeting on the 28th, we are asking for you to look at your schedules for the 27th and the 28th, to meet with Rachel and I for any financial discussions that you would like to have regarding the police department, before we have the bid meeting on the 28th. I know that's a tight turnaround.
Charlotte?
We didn't advertise that as, for the special meeting, it's not on, special meetings are advertised specifically for one specific thing, and we didn't.
Right, for the 2.
For the bid, I only put the bids on, for the PD, for the 28th. For the special meeting on the October 28th.
Right.
The finances, it's only for the bids.
Oh, yes, no, 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 I'm saying individually, council will meet with Rachel.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, no, no, I'm sorry, I was confused, I'm like, wait a minute, yes, so if you want to meet with us individually, before the special meeting on the 28th, let me put it that way. The special meeting would be on the 28th at 5:30 here. And then, to allow Rachel time to be able to pull everything together, if you will check your schedules for Monday, anytime after 1:00, we can schedule, and then Tuesday, anytime after 10:00 a.m.
That, that's the two days before the meeting, is that, am I looking at that right?
And on Tuesday, it will be the actual day of the meeting, the meeting will be at 5:30.
With Rachel, so Rachel's off this week, is that what we're saying?
No, Rachel just.
Or she won't have the information available?
She just got back, so she's going to work on it.
Okay. And again, you're saying the bid, what does that mean? What's, is this a decision to accept the bid?
Correct.
And Bert, because Bert had said he was going to bring something to this meeting, right? We delayed last week on the.
He was working on a contract.
A subcontract, yeah.
The contract, and, so he's working on the contract, and then we've been looking at value engineering.
Okay.
And so that's all what's being tied up, and trying to get finished, so that it'll be ready. They did not have that ready for this meeting, which is the reason why it wasn't forthcoming.
So that's eight days, right?
Yes, and very, and just so everybody knows, we're literally. Yes, and very, and just so everybody knows, we're literally bouncing from one in the office, one out, one in, one out, one in and one out, and that is our reality right now. We are dancing that tune.
Okay.
So, this is a SimCo bid, or is it all of the bids, what?
This will be the SimCo.
The SimCo.
Yes, ma'am. So, my understanding is if you decide that we don't want this one, you want to go to the next one, you'll make all of those decisions when we're there, but it'll be on the bid. So, but SimCo will be there with their bid, and also with the value engineering where we've brought it down.
But, do we have to give the others the opportunity to change their bids?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's value engineering, I mean, Bob, you can talk to this if you'd like, but, so the bid came in at 2.2, our budget is 1.6, and so, we were talking with them about value engineering and a contract, so they're in the process of getting the contract ready for us.
With your presumptive low bidder, SimCo, right?
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, Mr. Swain, I have a question on that. So, so, we can, we can negotiate with one of the bidders, but we don't have to go back to the others to give them a chance to...
So, you, you have options, you can reject all bids and go back and adjust your scope with whatever value engineering things you think ought to be reconsidered by a larger group. You can work with...
In the microphone, maybe?
Turn the microphone, yeah.
It's hard.
You can reject all bids and say it's over budget, and go back out to bid with a revised scope of work. You can negotiate with the low place, you couldn't negotiate with them to go really up, but negotiating for them to take less money is something that you could do. So, you, you've got flexibility there, you, you can't skip over number one and say we like number two better, so you, you do have to start with one.
Even if number two is close in price, you still have to go with the lowest.
You can't let anybody else, you know, try harder now that the numbers are known.
And, no...
You could reject all and put it back out, though.
Sure. And, and I guess, I've always been curious about the contractors that came to the meeting, they picked up a packet, they were told the budget's 1.6, and they never gave any bid at all, because they couldn't even get to 1.6. And, if we're going to negotiate on the 2.3 person to come down to 2 million, I just, it, it's just the overall, make sure the fairness with all of the contractors, not just those who bid, but those who are told, this is our budget, and maybe they could have done it for something.
That is certainly possible, that, that some did not even bother putting in a, a bid, knowing that, and you're, you aren't simply haggling with them over the price, you're asking, you're changing the scope of the value engineering, you're figuring out things you can do without, or things that they might recommend that would be equivalent in quality and performance. So, that's, that's a different animal than simply asking them to get even skinnier.
So, this is just on price, not on any scope?
If you're value engineering, you're changing, that, I mean, my understanding of value engineering is you're changing the scope. You're saying instead of 14-foot ceilings, we're going, you know, 12-foot ceilings, if that makes, if that saves supplies or is easier to put together.
So, and so, bid specifications you're changing in order to get the price lower?
Typically, you hear from the contractor, where they say, it was designed this way, but from a contractor's perspective, if you make these changes, we can save you a lot of money. If you, you can use PVC in this area rather than copper, things like, things like that.
So, then we can, if, we can, getting back to my question, rebid with the reduced scope, and tell the people who had walked away, we're rebidding on this reduced scope?
You can, you typically value engineer with a contractor, I don't think, that this contractor would want to help you all find areas you could save, and then get to rebid against themselves. I think they would like, if they were going through this, typically, when you value engineer, the contractor gets some of the savings, gets to keep some of the money that would be the overall savings, that encourages them, you know, to, to try hard, instead of just saying, we'll build it like we designed it, because we don't want any liability for design, li, you know, liability that it was improvidently designed.
And, and let me clarify, when I say we're working on value engineering, Mason with Cool and Cobb is the one who is handling this project for the town. So, it has been in conversation with him, where we have looked at other items that we were going through this process to begin with, with meeting to go over the design and the engineering portion for the Police Department. We knew, and Chief is not here, and I know Stuart has stepped into this, but when we went through this process, we went with the intent of knowing that the town of Lake Placid is going to grow. And so, there are areas that we already knew that we could potentially scale back on. It, it was built with, this is what we would like, but we knew that we may have to do this number. So, Mason has been working with Bert Warner, because we already knew when Kevin was here, that there were issues and concerns with the way that the water was going to run underneath the road, underneath 27. So, those are some of the conversations that are happening right now between Bert Warner and Mason, or his team at Cool and Cobb. And then, once we get the contract, we will have to then try to value engineer with the, if we award them, with SimCo.
I, I really think we're past, we're past the point where we can go back out to bid again. Every time we delay, and I keep bringing this up every time, every time we delay, the opportunity goes up another $200,000 or $300,000. If we reject all bids at this point, we can't, because we have already, we've already looked at the low bidder. And, and we don't have a contract, but we have in, in essence, accepted that low bid. What I think is, looking at the fairness of it, as Colleen said, if somebody, if a potential bidder walked away because they thought that there was no way they could do it for the 1.6, and they walked away and didn't even submit a bid, and now it comes back that maybe they would have bid if they hadn't known these things. But I, I think in their business, they know that. I think in their business, they know that that's a, that that is a possibility that could happen. I also don't think that in this particular situation, we're going to have a value engineering situation that's going to say, okay, instead of a 4,300 square foot building, now we're going to have a 3,300 square foot building. That's not, that's not what's going to happen, I, I, that's not where we're at with it. I think it's, it's just that we're looking at some things, maybe we can remove the, you know, the water, whatever she's talking about there, that would not have anything to do with the building, that would have to do with utilities. But, we, we already have told these SimCo people that they are the low bid, and, and they were here for that whole meeting last time, and then we did nothing, which we're quite good at. So, here we have the, the SimCo bid, and, and now, you, you want to start over again? You're, you're going to try to keep this going and going and going, until you're not going to get a police station, then you win. No, you lose, because the town loses. You can look at me and chastise me all you want, it was, I was asking the questions about the value engineering, what the process, and it was Mr. Swain who said what you could do. I understand that, I just had listened to you. So, you can, you can continue to, to comment towards me personally, however you want. I'm going to continue to ask the questions, and these are on the legalities of how the bid went out, the contractors, and then asking the question about the fairness with the other suppliers, and even, I just said the second one was 30,000 apart. So, if, if our bid documentation is sound, how we went out, with the, we've got the funding, we've got the, the option that we can negotiate with somebody on the price, if all of that is sound in the legal language, that's what we have attorneys for. And I was just asking what the process was. Well, I think... So, Charlotte, is it the Cool and Cobb will be doing the presentation of ideas that they think that the scope could be reduced?
We've been going through a list with him, so Mason has like a list of different things, and as Mr. Swain said, like, even with the flooring, like, if we went with techno flooring, we would downsize that, then where it's not something that's techno, it's a lesser product, a lesser quality product, I should say. So, some of those things we've looked at.
And are, and those are things that weren't in the bid as specifications that we required?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so, yeah, so the meeting's set for Tuesday, the 28th, at 5:30, okay?
And just reach out to me so that I can get everybody scheduled, if you'd like to come in.
And, and let's, if we get, if we meet with you ahead of time, and we discuss some issues, and we come to a conclusion or an understanding of those issues, then we don't have to come on the 28th and repeat those issues for public comment? That we, we've already got it, we understand it, and we move forward, or do we have to, is there any reason that we would come? Because if we're going to come and, and talk to you, and I, I'm happy to do that, but if we're going to come and talk to you, and then we're going to come on the 28th at 5:30, and we're going to bring up these same issues again, so you can tell me the same thing again, then why am I coming in the first place? For the public, so that the public can hear the questions, to agree that we are really pursuing the public's interests of proper management of, call it taxpayer dollars and the decision we made. So, and we can't individually, we can't have that discussion, it was just coming to you, asking your questions, and then, yes, we have the prerogative, if I want to ask the same question publicly, so the public can hear the answer. And, and the public is who elected us. And I'm also not meeting with Cool and Cobb, right? I'm meeting with you guys, yeah. And the public is who elected us, so I should think that they would have the confidence in us, that we discussed this, and we know what we're talking about, and we're going to have the best interest of the public in mind. But, if, I may have some questions, but, and I may talk to Charlotte about it, but then if you, if you feel that I have to come back here and tell the public, hey, this is what I learned, and this is, you know, this is the question, and these are, there's still questions I still have, even though they've been answered for me, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going to, I'm not going to come ahead of time, I'll just bring it all here.
Okay. All right, we'll go to council member, Joy, you got anything?
I think I mentioned about using maybe the Dahl Hall Building for after-school things, and when I heard Genesis say about value, life, life skills, that's also been one of my things that kids need to know. And again, if we can get anybody to volunteer from the community to help us.
And, Councilwoman Hayes also said some, who was our guest speaker at Kiwanis? Where was she from?
We're at, we're at Rotary, not Kiwanis. It's Rotary.
Rotary, I'm sorry, I got Kiwanis on my mind.
And was Danielle Don, was it Danielle?
Yes.
Yeah, Danielle Don.
She is with...
Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Yes, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Yes, and that was one that Councilwoman Charles spoke about too, so, it's all coming together, it'll all come together. Okay, that's it.
Deborah?
Yeah, I just, you know, last meeting that we didn't have air conditioning, and Harry's not, not here tonight, but I just wanted to thank him for going out of his way to go get fans, and I didn't have to go home and change clothes. So, I just wanted to say a shout-out to Harry, wherever you are, thank you very much for doing that for us, that was really nice. And, yeah, there's a lot of exciting things happening, and next month, lacrosse is coming back, I don't know, still don't know the dates for sure, but that's going to, they're going to actually stay overnight, it's going to be very exciting, and they want to bring their big tournaments here, so, yay, anyway, bless you all.
I went to the RPAC meeting the other day, and I just want to say, I know he's not here, but that Harry did a great job, and so did Carolyn Morrison did a great job as well, and she talked very positively about pickleball courts. And I was glad to see Carolyn Morrison talking, you know, in, in a positive way about our, about our pickleball court project, and that we could have a second project going at the same time, and I was pleased to see that. So, maybe we can get pickleball courts going, and, what am I supposed to say, playgrounds? Playgrounds going at the same time. Just a couple things, first, congratulations on the Facebook launch for the town, that's great.
Push it, push it, push it.
Push it, push it, push it, push it, yeah. And then, also, Councilmember Worley is being modest and didn't say, but this weekend was the 100-year anniversary of the college, which is the original high school, and so, it was really cool, and so, I attended, and I actually found out that Councilmember Worley was a queen way back when, and I could see her picture in her yearbook, and her full crowning and that, so congratulations on that, but that was very nice. And then, Charlotte, I did spend some time with some, and I've got their business cards, a couple administrators, one talking about potential college intern, and the curriculums that they have, and our high school, you know, co-ops, I mean, we call the word co-op and intern interchangeably, but that could be a great opportunity. They've got a lot of business students, they have a lot of different things, so I do have information on that, maybe you and I can work with them. And then, the other thing I talked about to Councilmember Eberhart's question was, they have a mentoring program going on, that they've started with the high school kids to sign up and be mentored and that. And so, I mentioned to her, this is something that when we knocked, you know, knocked on doors, some things we wanted to do for the youth, and we actually found retired schoolteachers who said, I'll help with mentoring, and I've since approached a couple other people, and so, I think we could team up with, I, I've got their information, I'm going to set up some time with them to see, okay, how can we make this overall work? I was very pleased to see, if you go to Zillow, and that's always bothered me, if you go to Zillow and you look at Lake Placid School Systems of a scale of 10, we are always been rated 3 or 4 for elementary, middle, and high school. I pulled it up in front of her, and same thing, middle and elementary are rated 4 of 10, high school is rated like 7 or 8, somehow, high school just jumped right up to the top. But I've always been a firm believer that, okay, if we can give some attention, you know, trying to figure out what's causing these low scores, and, and I think maybe some tutoring, it could be helpful, so, I just wanted to share that. And then, the last, I appreciate, just on the, the smoke run, is maybe going forward, when we have road closures, not just communicate, but where was the road that was closed, right? Because we had the high school run the week before, and people didn't know, you know, we kind of got impacted with that with Miracle League, but then this time, it's also, if we can just, the communication is good, but maybe the road where they're going to actually be closed for the public, it would be helpful. That was kind of the feedback, somebody kept trying, trying to get downtown, and they couldn't, no matter what route they, and, and it was, there weren't like detour signs either, on, okay, go here, and then, once they got way past the high school, the Marquette of, what do I do? And how do I get back? So, just a comment.
I was going to say, I have a girl for that, her name is Cordelia. She's going to help me with that.
Okay, yeah. We probably had to have, had to have a permit for the signs, or Dana would take them down.
They would.
But they didn't, those signs were all over, as they should be.
If that were in violation, I'd bet you...
No, it came to, you, you said it came to council, so...
A certain amount of the signs, you know, you can't put...
I want to thank, I don't have anything, I just want to thank Mr. Swain for coming down, we always appreciate you.
Always good to be here.
You're always welcome, and...
Thank you, Mayor.
We, we enjoy having you. All right, anything else come before town council?
Eva will be out the rest of this week, FYI.
Yeah, as of midnight, right?
Yeah, we're driving out midnight, yeah.
You need her, you, you got 3 hours and 19 minutes.
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.